Okay, I've got to call the meeting in order. Welcome everyone to the 13th meeting of the General Issues Committee for 2013. And members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast by the City Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. So Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the committee. We have several changes to today's agenda. The first is an added ceremonial activity, and there is a report in your packages which can be added as item 5.7, and the presentation is respecting Accredited Economic Development Organization AEDO. It is report PED 13061, added as 5.7 to the consent agenda. There's also an added delegation request for today's meeting from Anna Maria Gagnon, respecting the transit fare parity. She would like to speak to the committee today, as the item is on the agenda for discussion. And there are added discussion items. The first is the 2013 Hamilton Police Service Operating Budget, added as item 8.4. There is no copy distributed related to this item. The next is correspondence from Nancy D. Gregorio, Chair of the Hamilton Police Services Board, respecting the 2013 Hamilton Police Service Operating Budget. This can be added as item 8.4.1. And report 13-001 of the Accountability and Transparency Subcommittee Meeting of March the 5th, 2013, which can be added as item 8.5. And also, there has been a revised Appendix B to report PED 13063, which is item 7.1 on the agenda today, respecting Highway 5, 6 interchange and associated municipal roads, Ministry of Transportation, Environmental Study Report Addendum at Clovison's Corners. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, have a motion to approve the agenda's approved. Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Pearson, discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you. And members of the committee, are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, and members of the committee, you have before you the minutes of March 20th, General Issues Committee meeting. Are there any questions with respect to these minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve them. Pearson, Clark, all in favor? Carried. Also, before proceeding with the business of today's agenda, we have a ceremonial activity, and I'd like to call on Mayor Bertina at this time.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ferguson. On Thursday, February the 7th, I had the opportunity to meet and have breakfast with the International Economic Development Council's site visit team that was in Hamilton to audit our planning and economic development department and how we deliver our economic development services. I was very surprised to learn what a complex and involved undertaking this was and the amount of work put in by our senior staff on this over the past year. So the way it's explained to me is that the Accredited Economic Development Organization designation is equivalent in purpose and status to the ISO accreditation that is used in manufacturing and similar to how General Motors only deals with suppliers that are ISO certified. In the United States, site selectors, industrial realtors, and companies that are expanding look for the AEDO certification in local economic development organizations. So basically, it is a quality assurance. So based on the comments I received from the site visit team, I have to tell you how impressed they were with our city's commitment to economic development and the results that have been generated. It started when they walked into City Hall and started taking pictures of our one-stop business center, and continued in their meetings with local business, community stakeholders, and our staff. On Friday, March 22nd, the City of Hamilton officially received its Accredited Economic Development Organization status from the International Economic Development Council in Washington, DC. As you will learn today, we are the first municipal economic development organization in Canada to achieve this, and only the 33rd in the world. So we have a video, and then Tim McCabe and Neil Everson will fill in some more information on this. So if we could have the video now, Michael Marini.
Good morning, Mayor Bertina and the City Council members of Hamilton, Ontario. My name is Jeff Finkel, and I serve as the President and CEO of the International Economic Development Council. IEDC has an international membership of city, county, and state economic development organizations, and for Canada's purposes, provincial economic development organizations, as well as public-private partnerships in chambers and universities where economic development is an academic effort. While IEDC provides many services, one of those services that we are most proud of is our Accredited Economic Development Organizations program. That program basically helps set a standard for what good economic development programs are all about. We do an evaluation of the economic development programs in communities that invite us in, and we decide whether they should receive the AEDO accreditation or not. Hamilton, Ontario's economic development department has undergone that very examination, and we are pleased to say that they are going to become our 34th accredited economic development organization in the world, and the second in Canada. The AEDO review team was very impressed with their site visit to Hamilton's office, and in the organization's application itself. In particular, the review team spoke very highly of the economic development staff in Hamilton. The review team's documentation reports states, "All staff members display a sense of commitment to economic development, and their client service is exceptional." Staff members are able to articulate the mission and the goals of the organization. Management and support staff have considerable experience in the field of economic development and related fields, and all have relevant professional credentials. In particular, the report praises Tim McCabe, the General Manager for Planning and Economic Development, for his leadership and vision when creating the integrated system of economic development and planning that is currently utilized in the City of Hamilton. Likewise, the report speaks highly of the Director of Economic Development, Neil Everson, who serves on IEDC's Board of Directors. Neil is a 20-year veteran who has significant economic development experience. Both of these gentlemen have attended past IEDC conferences and have served as moderators and speakers for discussion panels. In addition, the review team noted that Hamilton's marketing efforts are world-class. Despite a relatively limited budget, it is clear that the Hamilton Economic Development Division enjoys robust community support, and the organization has demonstrated its importance to both the City of Hamilton and the region. Its record of success and its well-prepared plan for the future proves that it is in a strong position to continually positively impact the community it serves. Therefore, IEDC is thrilled to welcome the City of Hamilton's Economic Development Division as its 34th AEDO member. And as a more than twice visitor to Hamilton, Ontario, I would agree with many that it is also a very welcoming community, and I add my personal congratulations.
So, members of council... Remember once talking to Tony Champion, the great Tiger Cat receiver, when the team was in a kind of a low ebb? He said, "Tony, what's the matter with this team? How do we fix it?" He said, "Put the players on the field, let them play." In other words, give these guys the right funding and let them go and do their thing." And that's what we did, and this is what we have. And I'd like to call Tim McCabe and Neil Everson forward now to just comment on this remarkable achievement. Tim and Neil, please. Come on over here.
Certainly, I understand you have a very busy agenda today, so we're going to keep our comments short. You know, this announcement and accreditation is something I'm so proud of. I'm proud of it for the department, but I'm proud of it, most importantly, for the city. And it's not an easy certification, and it's not an easy process, I can tell you that. Fairly complex and comprehensive submission requirements, peer reviews. We had judges from New York and Halifax down for three days, talking to our stakeholders, talking to the mayor and some of our business communities. And, you know, there's various comments that was made in the report. You have some of the reports, but, you know, they sent the very, very smart and experienced review committee. And a lot of the questions from the committee were related to our model. And the review team commented on the unique organizational structure that we have, and they commented, and very curious about, you know, how economic development people were so successful working beside planners. How about that, eh? Working beside planners, you know, to allow you to move forward with projects more quickly. And economic development staff that could easily communicate with staff that are involved with permitting. And I tell you, the state side down in the US, it is mainly all arms-length corporations. They do not have economic development staff. I don't understand how they can meet their performance targets within the municipalities. I've always said that you've got to have the tools to make things happen, and the tools that we have here working with economic development are things like engineering and capital infrastructure, and our real estate services, and our incentive programs. And of course, the building permit, you know, the pot, pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. All having those in one team and being able to bring them together to make things happen is what's made us successful, I believe. Getting away from, you know, traditional economic development departments that are in ivory towers with the gold carpeting and red carpeting that want to be perceived as removed from the red tape in the bureaucracy of City Hall, it doesn't work. I think we've proven through our successes that it does work, and here, there was an email to Mayor Bertina. You'll like this one. I certainly learned, this is from the review judge that was down, "I certainly learned a lot from Hamilton's visit. You and City Council are what makes Tim McCabe and Neil's success possible. I've worked for five economic development organizations in my career, and I've had the chance to review the practices of many more. Never have I seen such a well-coordinated effort to make it easy for the private sector to invest in a community." I can tell you, Mr. Mayor and committee, there's 4,600 members of IEDC. 4,600. It's a worldwide organization, and as you saw from the video, we're the 34th organization that has been accredited. And you also heard from Mayor Bertina today, we're the first municipally-run organization in the world that is accredited. And the other one in Canada, by the way, is Halifax, which is an arms-length development corporation. So it proves our model's worth, works, and so many years to bring it together, and we've now got the recognition of our peers and organizations across the world. And I want to thank council for its unwavering support over the last four or five years. So, thank you.
Good morning, members of council. First of all, I'd like to ask the senior staff in economic development to stand up. They were a big part of the review team, and if I could for a moment. So, just a couple of quick remarks to add to Tim's. One of the reasons, there's actually three reasons we want to get the AEDO certification. And the first has to do with an initiative being led by our city manager, which is immigrant entrepreneurs, where, you know, we are going to be attempting and endeavoring to attract immigrants to this community to invest and to start corporate companies. The AEDO certification gives us that instant credibility beyond the borders of Hamilton and Ontario and Canada, and that is a real big factor why we wanted to do this, just not only to immigrant entrepreneurs, but to corporations and companies that are considering opening operations in this community. And that really is, as the mayor stated, it's an ISO equivalent designation. It guarantees quality assurance. The second one point I want to make is there's a recertification that occurs with this designation. We just don't get it and forget it. Three years from now, we will have to go in 2016, we will have to go through the certification. Much-scaled-down version, but it's to make sure that we are meeting current world standards in regards to economic development. And the last point I want to make is that the IEDC has an annual conference every year, and during that conference, for the AEDO-certified communities, so there's 34 of us, there's a three-hour session that only AEDO members can attend. And what's important about that is it's an exchange of best practices and what works and what's not working in the field of economic development. And as an AEDO member, we now have access to that. So again, we can just use this to make our model even better. And as one of the other, Tim didn't read it, one of the other emails we had was, we were very fortunate to have council support, and, you know, they were hoping that this would continue, and I'm sure it will, and we'll continue to do our best for you. Thank you.
It also goes to show you what three men and eight women can accomplish when they put their minds to it. Folks, this is really such an important thing for the City of Hamilton, and I know that in the previous campaign, there were many suggestions that we should go to the ivory tower, arms-length approach. And I felt that, and obviously council did too, that we had the people in place, all we had to do was give them resources and turn them loose, and the outcome. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Bob, and congratulations to Tim, Neil, and the rest of the team. I know when I ran a private sector company, I took it through an ISO certification, and it was tough. And you're subject to regular audits to make sure that you're still in compliance, but that initial certification was extremely difficult, and so I can personally understand what you went through to get this, and congratulations again.
Members of the committee, you have before you a delegation request from the members of the Board of Directors of the Canadian Ballet Youth Assembly, and they would like to come to a future meeting. So can I have a motion moved by Partridge, seconded by Powers? Sure, absolutely.
Could I suggest that they be accommodated at the April 17th GIC meeting, please?
That okay, Madam Clerk? Okay. So we move for a future presentation at the April 17th meeting. Counselor McCarty.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think that's supportable. I just wanted to ask about the clarification on the HECCFI situation, because I understand there's a lawsuit that HECCFI has with the organization. And I, we always need to be careful, don't put ourselves in a position where we're asking questions that may be difficult later on, those kinds of things. So maybe just a clarification before we vote, or maybe, which may lead to simply going ahead with the deputation, but maybe with some provisos.
Okay. Janice, are you aware of this? Is it something we need to be cognizant of in order to bring a delegation in?
I'm, I think it's a good point. What is going on is that the city is pursuing a debt collection against this organization, which was a debt incurred to HECCFI, and the quantum of that is $48,500. I don't know whether one suggestion might be that in advance of the deputation, perhaps this organization would like to make contact with staff to see if there's something that can be sorted through in advance of the deputation. And otherwise, depending on what they intend to be saying at the deputation, Governor Salzberg...
Madam Clerk. Sir Mayor, I think that's probably good guidance. So I think we'll just have to maybe be updated in some way ahead of the deputation, so we don't get into some questions that might get us in a bit of a jackpot. Thanks.
Counselor Powers, I don't know whether you want to amend your motion then that the delegation speak to legal counsel before they come, but it's up to you.
I believe our solicitor will just take the lead on that, but there was a document provided to all members of council, a multiple-page document that was provided to us with a chronological, so I mean, so there's nothing new. So I would suggest that our chief solicitor and that work with them to ensure that the appropriate discussions take place, and if some of them require in-camera, so be it.
Okay. So we have a motion then to invite them to the April 17th GIC, and our city solicitor can speak to them, and maybe we can review some of those issues that are gendered review then before it comes to the meeting. Okay, so here's the motion duty moved, seconded, all in favor?
Carried.
Opposed? That's carried. And the second one is a request for a delegation from Anna Maria Gagnon, respecting transit fare parity. So moved by House of Rula, seconded by Collins, all in favor?
Carried.
And since you approved that delegation, she wants to come today, so I need a motion to waive the rules to permit her to come today. Moved by DeVal, seconded by Jackson, all in favor?
Carried.
Hey, members of committee, you have before you consent items 5.1 to 5.7. Are there any items you wish to have moved to discussion agenda? Madam Clerk.
Through the chair, I understand that item 5.5 has an amendment that staff wish to advise the committee, please.
So we need to have a short, or somebody wants to speak to it? Mr. McCabe.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's just a typo correction on 5.5A. The legal description is not 62 or 15721, it's 15712. So if you could just acknowledge that, acknowledge that and put it in the corrections.
Okay, so is there any items committee would like to have moved to discussion items? Counselor Collins. 56. Counselor Clark. Counselor Clark, you have something you'd like to say? You had your hand up. Yes?
Wanted to get an update from our legal side. Must have been made prior to our new... ...ards to restrictions of grants and loans to individuals who were found to be convicted of different criminal acts and things along that line, staffer to come back with different alternatives and options available to counsel. I know through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that our legal counsel is new, but I don't want to lose sight of that request either, so...
Neil, do you want to comment on that? Janice, you?
Through the chair. We, that is in the works, I'm aware of that, and I appreciate the, that being brought to my attention in case I wasn't, but the city manager had made me aware of that, and I am working on that with my staff, and we will be bringing something forward a little later this spring.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. If not, I leave a motion then to approve items 5.1 through 5.5 and 5.7, with 5.6 moved to discussion. Moved by Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Johnson, discussion, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Okay, public hearings and delegations. The first delegation, I would like to now call on Dave Barnett to approach the podium to give his presentation.
You have, welcome, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. This is actually my evening time being a night worker that's usually well into sleep, so hopefully it makes sense of this. I've been trying to get this information heard since March of '09. I tried to put it in delegation requests, and I had a response back from Mary Gallagher saying it should be dealt with with the Police Services Board and the Library Board, and this would be regarding the bullying behavior that goes on in the city, and I've experienced plenty of it. I've seen a lot of it, too. I got a response back from, I've been through three chiefs of police, Robertson, Mullen, and DeCare, and the latest response from DeCare was, "You've been advised on several occasions, there's nothing further the police services can do." ...assistant, Taylor Beckett, and I think we all know what happened there. I might add that Terry says there's nothing he can do as well. Library Board, I got a letter from Jennifer Gotry, who basically said the same thing, that your request to make a presentation, the Library Board has been denied. I get letters from city solicitors saying, "Don't call us anymore," or "Don't call city staff anymore regarding the problems." But I've seen too much of it. Three days at the end of February, I saw a young girl pulling the chain of the dog that she was dragging along so hard and yelling at it on Main and Sherman, to the point I thought she was going to break the dog's neck. The next day, I see a young boy, maybe 10, got his, another young boy in a headlock, maybe seven, and he walks by me, he says, "Can you slap this kid for me?" The next day after that, I see a young girl, maybe eight years old, down at Main and Wellington, and her mother's just, "What is wrong with you?" She just plunks down on the sidewalk in distress. I cross the light on the yellow, she runs across, and me, her mother, of course, is still flipping out. Just today, getting off the bus, I saw an old lady in a walker. I've heard bus drivers say, "Sit down till the bus is finished moving before you get up." Well, she does this, notifies the driver, "I'm getting off, I guess he didn't hear him," and the people started filing on at Jackson Square, and it's like, "Well, I guess all you people have to get off." So he was rude to her. This goes on, it doesn't, a week doesn't go by when I see this happening. So there's certain elements of the city that you guys don't like, and understandably, because there's the influx of the undesirables, as the nutters, the circus freaks, I've heard the locals call them. I refer to them affectionately as Addams Family. People are a little bit odd, but most of them are very friendly. But there's too many of them. You drag in the problems from all over the region, you get them dumped here, and no wonder why people get all bent out of shape. There's one, there was an article in the review, I mean, the View Rants, about, this girl says, "I live on Barton, and there's this crazy guy who lives near. He comes up and he talks to me about God knows what. They're all around us. I don't want to deal with this stuff anymore." And this, and he got a article in The Spectator from a CEO of a company here, and he's talking about how golfers came into town, and they said that this is the worst hotel on tour, the service is despicable. So, and they had the scariest-looking degenerates downtown, this was the CEO talking about this, and brain-dead zombies kind of thing. So the problem is, you get them in the mental health system, you drug them into being zombies, they're poor as can be, because the group homes take almost 90% of the government checks, so they're downtown begging. And it looks like they're not as often downtown, it looks like the sweep, the action team has swept the undesirables under the rug, God knows where. But the problem is, like I say, there's too many of them. I can understand people getting bent out of shape because there's too many, the ratio's too high, but you can't, the local people, you're having problems with the girls in Corktown, opening up a spot down there. To just transfer them all over the city is not the answer. It's the ratios way too high, you have to stop this city as a dumping ground. You have to keep bringing other people's problems into the city, where they come here, and I've come from Niagara Falls, a hospitality town originally, and to come here, I can't believe what goes on, the treatment that I get, and I've seen other people get. Now, the atrocities, the atrocities that go on at the Hamilton Psych Facility have to be investigated. There's too much bullying going on there, it's nothing more than a boot camp. They falsify records, they treat people against the law by what the treatment they're doing, and then you send them out in the community, and all they are is frustrated. So the hostility is like the movie Crash, the one with Sandra Bullock, as opposed to the sex film by Cronenberg. But the problem is, is that there's the open hostility between all the groups, and it creates a lot of friction, and it has to, the only way I can see it being resolved is to stop bringing the rest of the region's problems into your city, and then just treat them badly, because there's so many of them, because you can't tolerate them. I can understand that, but you have to stop dragging them in. And that hospital needs to be shut down, it needs to be investigated, there has to be a complete investigation of the corruption that goes on up there and the treatment that the patients experience, and I've got documents to prove it. Thanks.
I give you a little attitude, a little more time, he has some questions. Would you stay at the podium, please? Counselor Clark. Counselor Clark?
With regards to the psychiatric hospital that...
Well, several times of being thrown in seclusion without grounds contrary to their policies, and fabricating reports, and then when I requested reports, even try to get access to these reports, it's very difficult, but when they did, they've changed the reports after the fact. I was thrown in seclusion, literally, almost broke my neck, I could get no medical attention there, and I was also in seclusion, they love to throw you in over the weekend, because they can hold you for three days, because there's no doctor to assess you. I was held in there because of my health conditions or my food requirements. I was held in there without food and water for three days. That's bad.
Okay, thanks for coming up today. We hope there'll be more. Okay. No, I see no more, so thank you. A motion to receive the presentation, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Pearson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. I'd now like to call upon Anna Maria Gagnon to approach the podium to provide her presentation respecting transit fare parity, and I would remind the committee that this is on item 7.2 of today's agenda, so is Anna Maria here? Here we are. So, Anna Maria, the podium is yours, and you have five minutes.
Okay, I'm here for the fight for people who are on disability. On Monday, my boyfriend, he's a Parkinson disease, he was demanded to pay a fare to get on the bus, and to see all these people with the device, there's some people that don't need it, it's called fraud, and my idea is to get the doctors to do a document, because my father is blind, he got a little photo stamped to why he needs the bus, because he's blind, ID card. So if we get all these disability, to get an ID card with the picture, just think of the money and the cost of paying for those people that can't afford the trip of a bus. So my idea is to catch these fraud and charge them by using a device which they don't need. I see it all the time. But on Monday, being discriminated by someone with a device, won't allow to be on the bus because she demanded money, a fare to be put on the bus, and also she didn't allow him to park the scooter on the bus. So I'm here for everybody who are just a disability that needs device, they shouldn't be paying a fare for the people who are fraudy. So my idea, if the doctors can do a document, and send it out to the government, get a picture ID, why they need to go on the bus, and this will happen, because these people who are fraudy, they're not able to get that. The people who are disability can get that, because just think, the poverty's so low, and all these doctor's appointments, it's going to cost all you guys money to pay for their bus fare or a bus pass, because they cannot afford the bus. So my idea is, it's like to catch the fraud. I see it, I'm on the bus, I mean, I have a cell phone, I use my cell phone for the HSR, and explain what the buses are, the bus people are doing. They're pretty rude and discriminating against people who are disability. So I fight for them, and to me, a document should be placed from a doctor, get a photo ID, why these people need the bus, not having to spend a lot of money and the cost of bus fare for them. So that's my input.
As a presentation, anybody have any questions? Counselor Pearson?
Thank you for the information. I just want to ask the question for, you mentioned your boyfriend, he wasn't allowed to take his scooter on the bus, could you just clarify that?
Well, he wasn't allowed to go on till he paid the fare, and I explained to the bus driver, because I read a lot, it's canceled till June. And she told me she was advised on Monday that her boss told everybody needs to pay the fare, but he came up to see me, and he didn't have to pay. So I tried fighting for him, but a personal bypass, I didn't have the change, but somebody on the bus gave him the money just to get on the bus. So I told her, I wrote the number, 2012, and I phoned HSR, they didn't accept me, and I says, you have to accept me, because I'm involved with the community of Coalition Center of Human Rights. So when I see this, people are discriminating the disability to what they have. Even when you go on the bus, the attitude of people, you hear them, they don't belong on the bus. Well, they do, you know, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Wadehead? Hold on, Anna Maria, there's another question.
Hi, Anna Maria, appreciate your presentation. It's clear that a lot of people with disabilities are disproportionately have financial challenges, no question about that, but there are people with disabilities that have good and strong financial means. So are you suggesting that the free transit should be for every person with disability, or there should be a combination of the medical documentation with a means test, meaning to determine what their financial capabilities are?
Well, I'm looking at, if you get a document written by doctors, why do they need the bus pass or the free pass to get on the bus? And do a picture ID with a stamp, and it shows why they need the bus. And you got the people who have the money are buying the device, the scooter, and when they get off, you can see their normal legs. So they can get a document from a doctor. They're buying these, they go to the store, you know? So if you ride the bus, you can see the attitude of people, and discriminating the bus people. And then when somebody gets on the bus, like a scooter, they're lazy to put the ramp down, they'll just take off. So my suggestion, get a document from the doctor, go to go station, do a photo ID stamped it, and why they need it, like Parkinson disease. Any device or legs, I mean, people's legs don't work anymore, you know, and it's not right discriminating, you know, when you got people who have the money are buying these device just to get on for free. So you want to have it who's fraudy and who's needy. Get the documents set from the doctors, picture ID stamped. That's what my dad has, and he rides the bus, and he shows that ID.
Anna Maria, I understand that, on the disability side.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, there are some people, and I already talked with disproportionately people with disabilities have financial challenges, but certainly there are people with disabilities that make good money.
But how do you know?
Well, because you do a means test. And if they make $80,000 a year, should taxpayers be subsidizing their bus ride?
Well, if they're making that kind of money, that means they're working, right? Those people cannot work.
Saying people that aren't working with disabilities, fair enough, I just wanted to get clarification.
Yeah. So people who are working can afford it, but people who can't, what do you do? You have to pay the cost.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I see no more questions. I motion to receive the presentation, Pearson, Johnson, all in favor? Carried. So, members of the committee, we're now on to item 7.1, which is a staff presentation, And welcome to GIC, and so the podium is yours, you can proceed with the presentation.
Good morning, Chair, and members of council. Thank you for having us here today. I will be providing a brief overview of the Highway 5 and 6 interchange addendum and the city of Hamilton's history with this MTO project. Prior to the overview, I would first like to introduce the project team that is here with us today. From the city of Hamilton, we have Sally Young Lee and Tanya McKenna, and from MTO, we have Bill Kung, Martin Mishleck, and Chris Barber. And from IBI, we have Stephen Chu and Don Drakely, who is part of the project consulting team. Don will be providing the overall presentation today on behalf of MTO. And now I'm just going to go quickly over the city of Hamilton's history on this project. Back in 2003, MTO completed a transportation environmental study report for the Highway 5 and 6 interchange, which is located in the Water Down, Flambeau area. At the time, MTO received all appropriate environmental assessment clearances from the Ministry of Environment. Following the environmental assessment approvals, the city of Hamilton and MTO entered into a cost-sharing agreement for the interchange. The cost-sharing agreement was approved by council on April 23, 2008. The agreement can be summarized into two main components. The first is the interchange. All related costs for the interchange will be shared at a 75-25% split between MTO and the city, with MTO's share at 75% and the city of Hamilton's share at 25%. However, all construction costs to the city for the interchange will be capped at 7.5 million, and it is important to note that the construction costs for the interchange will also include all the utility relocates within this intersection. The second component is the municipal roads. All costs related to providing the necessary municipal roads to facilitate this interchange will also be split at 75-25%, with MTO at 75 and the city at 25%. Following the signing of the cost-sharing agreement between MTO and the city of Hamilton, MTO identified the need to update key aspects of the 2003 interchange design. Since 2009, the city of Hamilton staff from various sections and departments have been working with MTO on the addendum work that is going to be presented to you here today. Under the environmental assessment process, MTO is the proponent, and this is for this transportation project, and the city of Hamilton is a key stakeholder. I will now turn it over to Don, so he can go into the details of the project, including why the addendum work is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Don, can you get as close as you can to the microphone, pull it right down to you so we can hear?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of the committee. I'm Don Drakely, I'm a transportation consultant with IBI Group, and I'm going to take you through a, hopefully, brief presentation on the background and the status of this project. It involves a study area that is in the immediate vicinity of the Highway 5 and 6 intersection, commonly called Clapason's Corners. It extends from Highway 6 just at the Niagara Skartment to a point north of Parkside Drive, and so that's a length of about three kilometers, and it extends about one kilometer each side of Highway 6 on Highway 5 and Dundas Street. The background, as Diana just mentioned, the Ministry of Transportation got an environmental assessment approval to build this interchange back in 2003. The point, the purpose is to build a new interchange to replace the at-grade intersection, and to meet transportation demands that are growing significantly and will continue to grow over the next 20 years. It's important to note that that 2003 environmental assessment approval did not include any municipal roads. So what we're doing now is, we are conducting and have just about completed an addendum to that environmental assessment to add some changes to the design of the interchange, to include changes to the municipal road system, and to add a commuter parking lot to the project, which hadn't been considered in 2003. In terms of the study area, it's also important to note that north of Highway 5 and Dundas Street, that area is designated as part of the Green Belt Plan, so it's protected countryside, so it's going to have limited development and growth in the future. To the south of Highway 5 and Dundas Street, that part is located within the Niagara Skartman plan, and although a lot of it is protected as a natural area, there is some urban development potential to the south of the Highway 5 and 6 intersection. This drawing here shows the extent of the changes that are now part of the addendum. So every red line you see there is a road section or a highway section that had not been considered as part of the 2003 environmental assessment, or is now being changed. The main change with Highway 6 is, is that an additional lane in each direction has to be added to accommodate expected traffic growth to 2031, the reason being that the previous environmental assessment that was approved in 2003 only forecasted to 2021. So we have 10 more years of traffic growth that have to be accommodated. But as you see from this drawing, a lot of the project involves an environmental assessment for changes to municipal roads. As Diana mentioned, the cost split is 75-25, MTO and City of Hamilton. The total cost of the project for the interchange is about 25 million to the city and 7.5 million to the, excuse me, to MTO and 7.5 million to the city. For municipal roads, it's about 2.5 million to MTO and about a million to the city. Now, it's important to note that with the agreement between the city and the Ministry of Transportation, the city's contribution to the cost of constructing the interchange is capped at $7.5 million. This does not include property acquisition, the city is going to be sharing a 25% of the property acquisition required to build the project. Now, the number one question that we've gotten throughout this project is when it's going to be built, and I can report that the Highway 5 and 6 interchange is not within the Ministry of Transportation's provincial five-year capital budget, so we can't tell you when it's going to be built. However, we can say that that budget is reviewed annually, and so we don't know what changes may be there in the future. A quick cross-section showing, this is a major piece of highway engineering, three lanes northbound with a big center median separating it from two lanes southbound, and it's eventually designed for a third lane southbound, probably within the 20-year horizon of the project. In terms of the changes that are required to the highway, and especially your municipal roads, I'm just going to take you through this by quadrant. So in the southwest quadrant of the study area, we first of all have the location of the Tim Hortons and Petro-Canada and Wendy's commercial operation, and I'm going to show you in a minute how they're going to be served. But the main change here is, is that Innovation Drive that you see is going to have to be extended with a new road called Street A up to intersect with Highway 5, and that will be a signalized intersection. The existing intersection of South Drive and Highway 5 is going to be changed to a right-in, right-out, and there will be a signalized intersection at the southbound off-ramp from Highway 6 onto Highway 5. So just to look at this a little closer, this is the commercial area in the southwest quadrant, and it will be served by traffic being able to, westbound traffic on Highway 5 being able to, excuse me, eastbound traffic on Highway 5 being able to turn into a cul-de-sac to serve the commercial area. Westbound traffic and traffic going northbound on Highway 6 would be able to make a left turn into the commercial area. Southbound traffic on Highway 6 will be able to take a direct route right across Highway 5 into the commercial area. But leaving the commercial area, the only way out will be a right turn, and that's a right turn only on green. So that's a major change for how that intersection is going to operate. Further up the road, in the northwest quadrant, north of Boers Creek, the major change there is, is there's going to be a center median down the middle of Highway 6, so that northbound left-turning traffic will not be able to make that maneuver anymore. What that traffic will have to do is travel northbound to Parkside Drive, make a left turn into a cul-de-sac, as you see in the red line here, turn around in the cul-de-sac, make a right turn out, and then access Woodsworth Drive. The Garwood Avenue intersection on the left side of the plan here is going to have to be closed. So this is a significant change for this area, but it's still a safe change, we believe, and it has the capability of operating properly. South of Boers Creek, there has to be some additional, some new additional municipal roads built. First off, north Wentworth Drive, which currently serves the Wentworth Community Center, is going to have to be closed, and all of the access that's currently provided to the businesses directly onto Highway 5 in that location are going to now be accessed by a new road that's built around to the back. And then that road will also continue to serve the new recreation center, as well as rear access to a couple of the businesses that are located on the west side of Highway 6. In the northeast quadrant, the main change there is the addition of the carpool lot. We feel that's the best location for the carpool lot based on property and traffic and safety and accessibility. The lot is for at least 100 cars. We've consulted with Hamilton Street Railway and Metrolinks, and they concur with this location, and it's also flexible enough to locate local and regional bus service in the future. In the southeast quadrant, the main change there is there will be a new road that will intersect with Dundas Street at a signalized intersection, and it will And it will extend down and become a new way of accessing three residential properties that are located on the Escarpment Edge, as well as Liberty Engineering. And the existing access to Liberty Engineering, which is a right-in, right-out off of Highway 6, has to be closed. And we've been in extensive discussions with Liberty Engineering and those three property owners, and we feel that this is the best way of accommodating their needs. Now, just a couple of pictures here. This is what it would look like in a rendering looking northbound. You can see on the right side, Liberty Engineering. You can see the off-ramp from Highway 6 northbound onto Dundas Street. The building with the little red roof on it is the Petro-Canada operation. And it's a very, a very significant change from, of course, the at-grade intersection that's there today. This is what it would look like looking eastbound along Dundas Street, and this is actually Highway 6, towards the Business Park, towards approaching the highway from the west. This is what it would look like on Highway 5, looking west across the new interchange. A much different situation, as I said, than what's there today. And this is what it would look like in the opposite direction. This is on Highway 6 looking eastbound towards, excuse me, Highway 5 looking eastbound towards Highway 6. And once again, the building with the red roof on it is the Petro-Canada. Now, property acquisition. MTO has already acquired some property for the interchange. MTO's objective all along and continues to be that they will entertain further advanced purchases of property on a willing buyer, willing seller basis. So all property owners have to do is contact the ministry, and they'll begin the discussions and negotiations for property acquisition. The ministry's property staff also remain available and have all throughout the one and a half years of this project to address the property owners' needs and negotiations. Now, the acquisition of property for the municipal roads, we believe that that can start to take place as soon as this environmental assessment addendum is filed and completed, which we are hoping to be next month. The consultation that's been conducted to date has been extensive. We had a very well-attended public information center last year in June. We've held extensive meetings with stakeholder groups, including residential and business property owners, and in some cases, their legal representatives, the conservation authorities, the Niagara Escarpment Commission, utility companies, and of course, municipal staff from Hamilton, Burlington, and Halton Region. First Nations have all also been contacted, as is required through the environmental assessment process. And what we have done is responded as best we can to anybody who provided comments on this project and requested information back. There will be one further public consultation event, presumably next year, as part of the detailed design, to explain the detailed design to people. But we don't have a date for that right now. So in conclusion, what staff has recommended is that the committee support this environmental assessment addendum and that we then move on to the next steps, which is to, as I said, be prepared to file, or to put out a notice of environmental assessment completion next month. There will be a 30-day minimum public review period. There will be opportunities for people to appeal through what's called a, the appeal process that the Ministry of the Environment allows. But in the end, the design of the road, the preliminary design, is now completed. The, and pending approval of this environmental assessment, hopefully, next month. Then we expect that the detailed design of the interchange and the municipal roads will be completed in the spring and the summer of next year. And as I said, the question of when it'll actually be built remains to be determined by the ministry. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And so just so I'm clear, Slide 21 is a resolution you want council to approve?
Yes.
Okay, so just leave that up on the screen then for now? That would be great. And I have Counselor Wade Ed.
Thank you. I think the first question I have is, what is the geographic scope drives the necessity to do what you're doing? So I need to understand, is this the traffic volumes that you're accommodating? Is it specifically Hamiltonians you're accommodating? Or is this a much greater scope that you're accommodating?
It is a greater scope than just Hamilton. Certainly, Highway 6 is a major provincial connection corridor right from 401 down to the Hamilton area. And similarly, Highway 5 and Dundas Street in your own jurisdiction are also contributing a lot of traffic to this intersection. So yes, I would have to say, and our traffic analysis was done on a, in a regional basis to determine how much traffic is going to grow at that intersection.
Geographically in that scope, where predominantly the traffic is coming from, are they making any contributions citywide for the development of this interchange and these changes?
Not to my knowledge.
The money that is being asked from the city in the context of the contribution, is that specifically for the local and regional road network? Or is that actually going directly into the interchange?
There is a portion of it that goes into the interchange, and then the rest of it is for your municipal roads.
Help me understand how the property taxpayers should be contributing to a provincial highway system.
I would have to refer that back to the arrangements that were made between the Ministry of Transportation and the city of Hamilton.
Maybe it's a better question to ask.
Yeah, I'm going to mic Ziegler. Could you, I think this was a previous agreement, but I'll let you go on.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This project is contained in our 2009 D.C. background study. It's reflected as 100% growth-related, development-funded. The project is budgeted at $25 million, 50% residential and 50% non-residential split. So again, 100% D.C.-funded at $25 million. Total project costs split equally between residential and non-residential.
So the question I asked earlier, Michael, is that the scope of what's driving the necessity for this change is not just Hamilton-oriented. So, and I also asked the question whether other municipalities are making contribution, and I was told basically no. So how would we enter into an agreement that we have to cover significant, or at least a significant amount of dollars, but no one else is making that contribution?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. My previous reference to the $25 million is the city's contribution, the city's projected cost. The overall project far exceeds the $25 million. So there is a significant contribution through MTO and through the province. And you'll see on page 4 of 16, the estimate is the total at $74.6 million, $18 million from the city, and $56.5 million through MTO from the province.
Didn't I also see, Michael, on the report, that there's a 75-25 agreement that was struck in 2008?
No. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The numbers I just referenced relate to that 75-25% split.
Okay.
I appreciate it's not much different than the, I think, the funding we had for the Red Hill Expressway, which is now a provincial highway, but where property taxpayers are paying for the lifecycle cost and maintenance. So that would drive the next question. Who will be maintaining this particular capital expense on the long term? Has the city got any role in operating our maintenance or lifecycle cost once this is built?
I don't believe that the city has a maintenance responsibility for the highway. You certainly will have a maintenance responsibility for your own municipal roads.
How about the lifecycle cost, maintenance cost?
I'd have to defer that to MTO.
Maybe Michael can tell me, is that part of the agreement, that we are now locked in perpetuity on the lifecycle cost of this particular interchange?
Currently not part of any agreement. I'm assuming for the municipal roads, the municipality would take responsibility for that because, you know, the ministry would not want to do the maintenance and long-term care of those facilities. But it's currently not part of the discussions we've had, and it's not part of the agreement that we put together.
Yeah. We had a bit of a giggle here when we saw that, as opposed to having people take a left turn, you're pushing them into a cul-de-sac, and they have to turn around and then backtrack to make a left turn. Is that the new best practice for transportation networks?
It is, it is a solution specifically for that location. The reason being that we are not certain about what the future of that residential cluster is on the west side of Highway 6. And therefore, we've tried to create a solution to allow them maximum access, albeit what looks like in a bit of a roundabout way, but still safe access. Until such time, over time, that that area changes. And we expect that over time it will change because of the, you know, the access restrictions and the, just the environment of living beside a six-lane highway.
So has MTO exercised that strategy? Or there's a living example that anywhere in Ontario?
I'm not familiar with another example in the province for that type of a solution. It's what Don said.
You need to get rid up to the microphone.
So I'm not familiar with any other type of solution we've had for that. I mean, we've put in cul-de-sacs for municipal roads. We've done it on 406 and other areas. But, you know, we're trying to find the best solution for the local residents in that area. And we're having those conversations at our property office with the residents and through our PICs to get their input in terms of the best way to satisfy them. You know, as Don said, eventually, this could become a controlled-access highway, and the highway is getting extended further and further north, right? So the ministry has to sort of look towards the future at this location, so.
I understand, and we had a meeting not very long ago, I think, with the MTO. We talked about the 401 connection on Highway 6 and the fact that it goes down to, I think it's two lanes through, I don't know what that town is, Morrison, or whatever it is. And so I'm trying to understand, you widen, you expand, you accommodate at one end of this highway just to narrow it down to a two-lane highway at the other end. So I'm just trying to understand how this, is this working concurrently? Are you doing something at the other end? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that you would expand greater capacity at one side of Highway 6 when it bottlenecks at the other side.
We've had that question asked to us before. The answer is, is that the Ministry of Transportation is looking at the future of Highway 6 right from the 401 down to the 403. What we're dealing with right now is one specific, albeit complicated, location along that highway. But the future of the highway, all the way up to the 401, is being studied by the ministry.
Okay, and you're looking for this recommendation to be passed today?
Yes.
This is the first time we've seen it. Thank you.
Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for the presentation. I have been, just for my colleagues edification around the table, I've been involved in this since 2010, actually, prior to the election, with residents who were looking at it. But we have had a couple of meetings. We've had meetings with some of the businesses there. And this is a massive project. As you can see, it's, it's just literally going to blow up that whole area of Water Down, which, by the way, is where all the development is happening and all the new homes are happening. Parkside Drive will be under construction. The new bypass will be built within the next 10 years. And we're going to have this. So my question, gentlemen, when the interchange is under construction, where will the traffic go? I'm assuming there's going to be lane closures. There's going to be a reduction. Where will the traffic go? Because it is, I don't know what the counts are now. I think they're around 70,000 per day. And perhaps you could just clarify that in part of your answer as well. Thank you.
Well, I'll start off and answer it. If MTO or our project manager can add to it, that would be appreciated. But in order to build something like this, one of the first things you have to have is a detour plan. That plan is prepared as part of the detailed design. That plan will describe, and in working with the city and the other involved municipalities, that plan will describe how traffic is going to operate in that area. But normally speaking, detour plans are created so that the flow of traffic can be maintained. It's just maintained in different ways. And that access to property is maintained, but in different ways.
And the capacity right now, what is the traffic count for that area?
The daily traffic volumes on that road are, depending on the location, between 20,000 and 30,000 vehicles a day. It's very high. I'm just talking about Highway 6 here.
I thought it was much higher than that, actually. I was going to say, when they did the interchange at York, which is just south of Clapperton, it was around 42,000 to 45,000. So I would suggest that the figure would be much higher up at the 5 and 6 interchange. And so that, you know, I mean, that's part of what concerns the residents and certainly concerns me, is in doing this detour plan, I don't know where the heck they're going to be detoured to because the other roads are also going to be under construction. And there are no other major arteries to accommodate, particularly the truck traffic, which huge tandem trucks and transport trucks, there's thousands upon thousands of them. At any given time, when you sit at that intersection, you can count 30 or 40 of them just going through one light. So when, when will you be doing that detour plan, is my question?
As I said, the detour plan is normally conducted as part of the detailed design, and that'll be next year.
Okay. Now, I understand we've taught, you've mentioned in here when your Public Information Centers were held. And I can tell you that certainly at the last one, many residents were extremely upset. Our staff did as best a job as they could, talking to the residents. But they seemed to be in the dark. And for many of them, this was the first time that they had heard about any of the details. So I'm concerned that there's only one more Public Information Center planned. And can you just confirm again when you think that's going to be? Because I think sooner is better than later.
Well, right now, we're expecting that that would be held, as I said, during the detailed design exercise so we can explain to people exactly what it will be, how it'll be built. Like you said, what the alternative traffic arrangements are. And that right now is expected to be next spring. So the spring of 2014. In terms of the dialogue with the public, we've been actually dealing with people much more through informal one-on-one contacts than we have through the Public Information Center. So we, I think we've gotten the message out. I know we've gotten the message out to all of the interested parties that all they have to do is pick up the phone or send an email, and they will be able to contact our team, and we'll be able to address whatever they need to be addressed.
And you do have that contact information? Because I would certainly appreciate it in our office, so that when we get the calls.
I could make that arrangement. It's a thick document, but I could get it.
Don't want the document. All I want is the name and the phone number and the email. That's all I need.
It's still a thick document.
Nope, that's all I need, just to be able to say, here's who you talk to.
I can range that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. One of the, one of the areas that I hear, go ahead, Diana.
We have the project on our website with all of MTO's contact information, so we'll send that to you as well. It's just easier direct access to it.
Thank you, Diana. With due respect, I don't even want to go down the road of our website. That's a whole separate discussion. So don't start. So through you, Chair, if you could get me that information for the contact, that would, that would be terrific. And I, and I guess the other question I have is, when you hold the Public Information Center, are you informing people of what their rights are when it comes to the expropriation process?
Yes, that was one of the main pieces of information that was presented at the PIC, was not only their rights under the Expropriation Act, but also the process that the Ministry of Transportation uses to acquire property. We had a lot of discussion about that that day, and we have continued to since then.
Because as well, I do, we do get calls about that. As much as there were people attending the PIC, there are probably just as many people who weren't able to attend. And so if I could have that information as well, and again, I don't need a huge document. All I need is just, you know, a one-page document that has that information on it. It'd be most appreciated.
What I would like to do, though, is clarify that the position of the Ministry of Transportation is, is that expropriation is a last resort. As I said, they want to deal on a willing seller, willing buyer basis. So if a resident or a property owner out there is interested in selling their property, then that's not an expropriation, hopefully. It is a land purchase.
And I appreciate that. But through you, Chair, sometimes that willing buyer, willing seller, people don't understand their rights going into that process. So it may end up being of more of a benefit to the MTO and to the province than it is to those residents. And so as the representative for the area, it is very important to me that my residents understand what their rights are. And, you know, if that puts you folks in any kind of a conflict, then by all means, give us the information. As the counselor, I can certainly have that conversation with them. I want to make sure that they I want to make sure that they understand just, just what, what their rights are, what they don't need to do, more importantly, and how long they can wait.
I'll be very helpful.
All right, thank you. And through you, Chair, the, the other area I want to talk about here is timing. When did this process for this particular project, when did it start?
Before the, before the...
Yeah, 2010 this project began. It's been active since then.
Oh, since, since 2010?
Yes.
2010.
All right. But through you, Chair, when did you actually start? This has been 10 years in the making, I'm sure. Yeah, no, it's been a long time.
Yes. In fact, as I said, there was an environmental assessment and a design done that was approved in 2003.
Thank you, thank you, yes. And so, just, just, you know, to understand particularly the businesses that are located at Highway 5 and 6, they're going to have to, many of them will have to close down, they'll have to move. And so, not getting information on this project has been, has created a particular angst for them. And I'm still getting questions, when is this going to be on the five-year plan? I understand that it's reviewed annually, but are we getting close now or are we still another five to 10 years away?
That's where shovels in the ground, the question, is it when we're going to actually be starting construction?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair.
It's, it's really hard to say in honesty. You know, the ministry has, they're currently focused on, on improving the existing infrastructure and on pavements and on bridges. That's sort of our focus. These types of expansion projects have been sort of put on hold because of budgetary issues. So, it's really hard to say when they'll find the funds for this. They do, as, as Don said, they do look at the program every year on a yearly basis, and they, they look at trying to put those types of projects on that capital program. But it's, it's very difficult to say when exactly that may be.
Just for the record, we didn't hear when you introduced what your name and position is.
Sorry. My name is Martin Michalik. I work with the Ministry of Transportation. I'm the area manager for MTO Highway Engineering Office.
Thank you, thank you, Martin.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mark and Don. And, you know, I, I appreciate that, but that does not help the residents and the, and the businesses that are located there. Because, you know, are they looking at another two years? Are they looking at five? Are they looking at 10? So, in order to do future planning, that's quite difficult. And we had a meeting with some of the businesses, and you heard them, I think, loud and clear, loud and clear about what some of the angst was. Those are really all my questions. We've been through this several times in, in different meetings, and I've certainly been apprised by our staff, Diana and the team, they've done, done a wonderful job. But the, the really important part of this comes down to making sure the residents are informed and that they're informed in a timely manner, not only about the project, but what their rights are. And that's what I need to have some assurances on. So, at the appropriate time, Chair, I will move this recommendation. We can't hold this up any longer. We need to get going. The, that whole community, the Water Down area, is just going to be under siege for the next 10 years. And in all fairness to the residents that are living up there, they've already been under siege for the last two or three years. This is going to absolutely cripple my community. We have to get going on this. So, thank you. It'll be seconded by Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
Well, I'll come back to you once we're finished our speaker list. And for speakers, I have Counselor Jackson, Counselor Clark, and Counselor Pearson, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay. And Don, just for clarity, the Tim Hortons and Wendy's, will they be closing or will they be accommodated in the design?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's up to them. We have accommodated their access, and we've had a number of meetings with them, and we are still not clear what their plans are.
Okay. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And Diana, thanks for the preamble of the presentation, and Don and Mark for the presentation, your answers. Just three or four just general questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Don. So, Don, on the interchange cost, it's approved 75-25 split, and ours is capped at 7.5 million. So, I'm just asking hypothetically, if the cost were to go to 40, 50 million hypothetically for the interchange, and our 7.5 million represents only 5 or 10 or 15% from the original 75-25, that cap sticks. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Don, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's good to know, because I, I know with the project costs and that, what can happen? And sometimes if there's some conditions, if you will, that we didn't anticipate this, so the city may have to cough up more, but that's ironclad. Ours is capped, Don, at 7.5 million.
Yes.
Thank you. Don, in the staff report, it says the 5-6 interchange project is currently not contained within the province's five-year capital forecast. Somebody help me understand that with all this acceleration and need to do this, and yet within the current provincial government. Somebody want to explain that through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, please?
Well, simply put, in the province of Ontario, the Ministry of Transportation, every three or four years comes out with a capital budget on construction across the whole province. And if a project is listed in that capital budget, then it is, funding is directed for it, and it can be implemented. If a project is not in that capital budget, then there's no funding being directed to the project.
So, if we were, I know we're not ready to start tomorrow for Counselor Partridge's sake primarily, and Counselor Pursuit is the other Flamborough rep. So, it's not even, the money's not even in the provincial capital budget. I find it a little bizarre, and yet the presentation is one of urgency. So, I'm not laying this on the messenger's lap, Don, but I'm just really perplexed by that. Any further comment?
Yes, I think you have to consider the complexity of this project. It was and is necessary to get the detailed design of that interchange and all the associated road changes finalized, in part so that, number one, the residents and the property owners and the businesses know what's going on, and also for the ministry to start negotiating about the purchase of property. That doesn't necessarily hold up the construction of the project. The project, as you say, will be construction-ready when the time comes that the budgeting is provided by the province.
Okay, appreciate that explanation. And now, this is more a parochial ward issue for Counselor Partridge, but I was just, I was just found curious, the bullet point about removing residential driveways on Highway 6. People with properties on Highway 6, they know that this is coming, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Don?
Yes, they do.
And what, and they're going to make alternate arrangements without their driveway access onto Highway 6?
No, if a property is losing its access onto Highway 6, the property will be acquired by the province.
Oh, I see. Okay, so goodbye homestead. I get that. And lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Don, Don, you've said consultation with Burlington and Halton region, and yet the province and city of Hamilton are the only ones funding this. So, in spite of traffic coming from many regions, I'm just curious about the consultation aspect, considering they're not funding partners. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Don, please?
The consultation with the city of Burlington and the region of Halton was dictated primarily by individual property owner issues, and the, and the city of Burlington and the region of Halton were drawn into those discussions.
Oh, by individual business or residential property owners?
Well, for example, the three properties that are on the south side of Mountain View Road are actually in the city of Burlington.
Okay. And again, the area we're talking about for this project is just north to about Parkside Drive, because I've driven up there a number of times, and just east and west on 5, just past, if you will, the commercial, the immediate commercial areas, Don?
Yes.
That's basically what we're talking about.
And, and south to the edge of the escarpment.
Okay. Thanks so much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark.
Through you, Chair, I just wanted to clarify one question that was asked by Counselor Jackson. Mountain Brow Road is a boundary road between the city of Hamilton and the city of Burlington. We have an agreement in place with the city of Burlington that if there's any improvements to Mountain Brow Road, we cost-share those improvements. So, there will be a portion of the Mountain Brow Road improvements that will be paid by half by the city of Burlington. So, there'll be that 75 split between MTO, and that 25% split will be split in half between city of Hamilton and MTO, or city of Burlington.
Thank you for that, Diana. And that's locked in the agreement. The city of Burlington is aware of that then? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Diana?
They are aware of it. We're just currently trying to negotiate the amount.
Thank you for that. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark. Deputy Mayor, thank you for having the opportunity to ask a couple of questions here. I am keen to know whether or not the MTO has started to access the properties that they're going to need for the widening and the construction.
I'll start off answering. The ministry has identified the properties that they need to acquire. The residents or the owners of those properties have been notified that their properties will be required. Whether there is actually any negotiations between the province and the property owner really depends on whether the property owner wants to begin those discussions. Some of them have, and other ones have not, for whatever reason.
To be fair for my colleagues, similar to an expropriation, the province would try to fair market value, failing that, they can go to...
That's the process, yes.
I was surprised that I didn't see a critical timeline or path. I, I'm hearing dates out there. I'm hearing that it's not in the capital budget. But that doesn't mean that the minister and the ministry don't have critical timelines telling them what year they expect to begin the work, tendering or designing or all the rest of it. Can we have access to that? Can we have the crystal ball that tells us the future when it's... Because right now, we don't have any of that. So, to my colleagues and...
Mark, do you want to take time?
And, and I know they exist, because I used to see them and read them, so.
I think the ministry is sort of being proactive on this project, right? We're, we've hired a consultant to do the detailed design. We're putting the, the contract together. You know, we have been contacting local residents. The, the complete implications for local residents is not, is not for sure in place at this time, you know, until we revise the detailed design. You know, our property office hasn't approached all the property owners impacted yet as, as the, as design sort of gets revised, right? So, that, that process sort of all, all has to take place. As, as I was saying, the ministry is being proactive. We, we're acquiring properties where we can. We've taken properties at the interchange a few years ago, and we're continuing that sort of amicable process with local residents, and we're trying to be proactive as, as we put a contract and get this sort of in place and have it ready to go when the funding is there. But unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you in terms of the funding. You know, it, it is a decision that has to be made when they review the priorities for the provincial budget. And, and as I mentioned, our, the province's priorities are, are, the mandate at the moment are to focus less on expansion and a little more on current infrastructure improvements and bridges and pavements. So, that, that's sort of where we're heading at the moment, but that can change. And, you know, it's really difficult to predict in terms of funding and whether, when this can be actually put on the capital budget. I just don't have an answer for you.
Deputy Mayor, I'm having a bit of a challenge understanding if it's proactive, then they should have some indication of down the road. Is it going to be 2015, 2016? When are they shooting for? We know it's not in cement. No, it's not cast in concrete. It may be rolled in asphalt, though. Is it, is there... Exactly. Approximate date, when you expect the tender to be called on this? A non-committal date? Just so we have a guide? Thank you, sir.
I, I just, I really can't comment on that. I, unfortunately, you know, we will have the contract, the completion of the detailed design and, and everything in place by next spring. But at that time, the province will have to look at their priorities and make that call in terms of when, what timeline they're anticipating for this project. I really couldn't say any more than that this time.
Counselor Clark? And the last question was, when this first started out many years ago, Burlington indicated they weren't going to pay for anything. So, now have indicated that they are going to pay for a portion of what's directly in their boundary. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, Mountain Brow, half of Mountain Brow Road.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you for the presentation information. I, a few of my questions have been answered, and I too have concerns that we don't have a timeline. But my next question that was contingent on that answer was, the whole project itself, and I know you anticipate how many years this is a build-out, is the project being phased through? Like, you're not going to have the whole, the whole intersection?
We're, we're expecting that, under optimum conditions, it would take two construction seasons to build the interchange and everything associated with it, with perhaps a third and final construction season, just to wrap everything up and finalize it.
That's for both, all, for the whole...
Well, the whole interchange and, and the, the road improvement, the highway improvements, et cetera, and the municipal road improvements, if, if the city decides they want to have that done at the same time, which would probably be a wise idea.
But implications and complications come up, even just on residential streets, as far as being able to address current traffic flows at the time.
You see, in, in building the interchange and in building the highway improvements, that's where some of these accesses to properties are going to have to be closed. So, there will be some municipal road construction that will be required as part of that. It just, it has to be to provide access to properties.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and I certainly have to concur and sympathize with my colleague in Flamborough, Counselor Partridge, because I can't imagine the nightmare that she's going to have to deal with in the next number of years. But we do need to get on with this. Thank you.
And last speakers, Counselor Powers.
Speaking from experience, and my ward included the interchange at York, York Road down at the bottom, and, and the timing is absolutely no surprise. I mean, there was absolutely nothing in the forecast at the time. We were talking about the interchange, and we were talking about the interchange that you're talking about now up at 5 and 6 back in the 1990s. So, it wasn't on the forecast, but it was something that needed to be done. So, obviously, through the persistence of the, of the residents and the ward councillors, we pushed for that. And the planning that you're doing became the integrable part that allowed the minister and the ministries, in other words, it was a shovel-ready project that was there to proceed and, and allowed the ministry to move it into the five-year forecast and move it early into the five-year forecast to make it happen. This planning needs to be done, otherwise it's going to be on a, on a planning horizons for, I'm going to call it, decades to come. So, we need to move ahead on the recommendation before us, Mr., Mr. Chair, and, and allow staff to move ahead. And, and certainly, the public consultation is essential. The project interchange was well-informed. You've alluded to the contact information. Staff were extraordinary in responding almost immediately to, to telephone inquiries or, or emails or whatever the case. And we would expect exactly the same for Counselor Partridge and, and her constituents from that standpoint. So, informing the, the impacted neighbors, and it's more than just the neighbors, because, you know, the traffic flow will be affected, both in an east-west and north-south direction. The idea of doing everything all at once, I just have some angst about that, but I'm sure you'll have, you'll think that as it, as it plays, plays out from the standpoint. And it's, and it's gone through many masserations. As, as my recollection was, it was going to be, it was going to be an overpass on the, on the east-west direction with, with the road going underneath and that. I'm thinking this is probably is, you were look, you were directed to go back and come up with a solution, but something that's more economical that, that the, the province could, could afford. Because I'm, my, my thinking was that the original proposal was pretty close to twice what's being contemplated now in a, in a budget thing. So, let's get, let's move ahead with it and give Counselor Partridge and, and us the approvals to...
Thank you. I think Counselor Partridge, you're moving that motion seconded by Counselor Powers?
Yes, I will be moving it, and it was seconded by Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, okay. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much for coming out today. Thank you, Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All in favor? Carry it. It is now 11 o'clock, and we're going to move on to item point 8, 8.4 on the agenda, which is an added item respecting the 2013 Hamilton Police Services operating budget. And recall that at the March 21 budget meeting, the committee made a motion to invite representatives from the police service to attend a general issues committee meeting to respond to questions with respect to the police services budget. And I think at this time, I'll list, I'll read out the names of the people who are here, and in case council members don't know who they are, maybe you just wave when I, I mention
your name. And so the first is Nancy De Gregorio, who's Chair of the Hamilton Police Services Board. Thank you. Madeline Levy, the Vice Chair. Thank you. Irene Station, a board member. We got the Deputy Chief Ken Linders, who is also the Acting Chief. And Ken, you may want to make your way down to the front. Deputy Chief Eric Gert is here. Marco Vicenti, Legal Counsel. Thank you. Ted Mason, Finance Manager. And you may want to make your way down to the front also, along with Deputy Gert. John Randazzo, Assistant Finance Manager. Thank you, John. And Lois Moore, and the Administrator to the Board. Thank you. We are all here. So I turn it open now to the committee. This is your opportunity to ask the police the questions that you had at the last meeting. So who would like to go first? Counsel Duvall? Counsel Whitehead, next?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to, and I don't know who can answer this. On the letters that I received from the chairman and from our police chief, they refer to a 3.62 budget, maintenance budget, to, in order to meet the conditions of the collective agreement between the Hamilton, between the Board and Hamilton Police Association. So I would just asking, like to know, my understanding is the collective agreement has expired as of December 2012. And so that would be a continuance, there would be no enhancements at this particular time, because there's collective bargaining is going on. So I'm trying to find out how they came to 3.62% for enhancements of a collective agreement that has expired.
Ken, do you want to take that? Story Acting Chief?
I shall start with it. I mean, obviously, for the 2013 budget, there will be a salary contingency for a contract that's still not negotiated. So we have to put a salary contingency in there. But everything else, that 3.62, is fulfilling all the other contractual obligations. And Ted, maybe can continue on from there.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Just to provide some clarity on that, is the 3.62%, it includes an estimated contract, or, you know, whatever the estimated contractual impacts are, we're looking at through other comparative, you know, the other police services there. So it does include an estimate for what can happen in 2013. And along with that, it includes the benefit changes, the Omer's contribution rate increase. So it encompasses the, you know, what we are looking at forward for 2013.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair, and I take that on a hypothetical matter, it is accounting for any kind of increase that may happen, but we don't know what that actual number is. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I would suspect the answer is you know what it is, but we can't share publicly yet. We may have to go in camera if you want any further information on specifics.
All right. My other question is, it refers to the hiring of 21 officers, and that would be included in this 3.62% request. Is this, my understanding is the hiring of the new officers will be done at the end of the year. So it doesn't really show a true cost of what the officers are going to be costing us this year, but it will, definitely should bring up the budget for next year. Is that correct?
Ken, that?
The tag team on this answer. The actual approved budget by the Police Services Board is 3.71, and that included the 20 officers plus one civilian. The contract obligations that's moving forward into 2014 would be 0.75. And Ted can answer any other specific details.
Okay. So then, what I have here in front of, signed by Chief De Care, is even if we establish the council dated that 3.62%, he's made it very clear that he's intending to hire the 21 officers, whether it's 3.71, whether it's 3.62.
That is correct. If you've seen the letter that the chief sent council yesterday, the maintenance budget is 3.62. You add the 20 officers plus one civilian, it will bring up the budget to 4.05. And then what we've done is found other deferrals and savings to bring it down to 3.71. The difference between 3.71 and 3.62 is $119,000 gap. And the hiring of 20 officers is such a priority for our service that we would look for whatever avenue we could to ensure that we hire the 20 officers, even if council comes back at 3.62.
Counsel Duvall?
If council came back with a lower number, would the 21 officers still be included?
If council came back at a lower number, that position would have to go back to the Board, and the Board would have to decide what its next steps would be, if in fact they would accept the budget or they would look at other venues.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, Counsel Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding that we had an adequacy audit by the ministry. Can you just tell us how that went?
That is right. We had an adequacy audit by the ministry on four specific areas within the service, and we're proud to say that there was zero recommendations. They have already, the ministry has done eight specific audits across the province already, and it's the first time they've ever come to a service that had zero recommendations. So basically, our policies and systems are in place. Our officers are trained to fulfill what is adequately, what adequacy requires them to do.
So we accomplished that with the current complement. Is that correct?
That is correct. The specific audit did not look at the entire organization. What it did, it looked at areas such as missing persons and how we respond to missing persons. It also looked at hostage barricade situations and how we control a situation when there's a hostage barricade situation. And we looked at other policy areas. So basically, what the audit did was made sure that the service is following adequacy standards in specific areas and that we are able to respond accordingly, and that the officers have the training, knowledge, skills, and ability to do that. So that's what they're looking at, making sure our policies are in place. It did not look at the entire service. It did not look at staffing levels. It looked at those specific areas.
Now, the ministry's done audits before. Did they look at staffing levels before?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, they have not looked at staffing levels before. Traditionally, their audits are on specific areas. The last audit that we had under Chief Mullen was about the business planning process and our firing range. And out of that audit, there was 21 recommendations that came out. But they can't look at the entire organization. Obviously, it's too complex. If you look at even our policies, we have over 197 policies on how to effectively operate the police service. So they can only look at specific areas at that time.
So it's safe to say, then, currently, we have no adequacy issues in regards to the complement as determined by the Ministry of Lieutenant General?
It would be safe to say that we are meeting adequacy standards in the four areas that they checked.
Thank you. The seven-year, what's it called, the seven, Hamilton Police Service Staffing Seven Performance Management Plan, Staffing and Deployment Study, prepared by, June, August 2011, by the Seven Year Staffing Committee. In that report, it indicates that any decision in regards to policy needs to consider citizens willing to fund. How did you test that in this study?
That study, which was prepared for the Board, was to review what our projections were for the next seven years. Was that specific theory tested? I can't say it is, but it's a general terms that you would guess that the area that you're talking about would have to be considered when looking at staffing numbers.
So the question was, how much proactive time should be patrolled, division? So part of the plan drives what kind of resources are needed. And in the report, clearly indicates that this policy decision, not a calculated decision, is based on the desired level of performance and what the citizens are willing to fund. And so I guess the key question, certainly for the citizens in this community and this council, is how did we test that? How do we determine the citizen willing to fund the performance that we've decided on?
Your point is that if you read the staffing report, it talks about a 40-60 model, where the officers respond at 60% of the time reactively and 40% proactively. When we talk about proactive policing, we're talking about crime prevention. We're talking about arresting people with outstanding warrants.
Mr. Chair, the question, I'm not asking to clarify the policy.
So the question is...
I'm asking specifically, I mean, it's not my writing, it's theirs, it's their study. And it says clearly, and I'm going to underline this because I think that's the cruts of the discussion we're having.
Counsel, what's...
Citizens are willing to fund.
Why don't let the deputy answer that question, then you can re-ask it if you didn't get the question answered.
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't want to drive into a lobby. I don't want to drive into a marketing. I want to drive into specific, I'm asking a specific question on this particular comment in the report that says that to decide on what action, you need to determine citizens willing to fund.
Ask your question again, then.
So I'm asking, what level of study did we do to determine citizens willing to fund?
Eric, you want to take that?
Yes, if I could speak to that through you, Chair. In essence, the governance model that's enacted through the Police Service Act answers that question. Within relation to this study, there is no specific model that would govern what is adequate and effective across all police services across, in essence, the entire world. We looked at the IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and looked at those models that exist out there. Within most of those models, there's a provision that the community will determine what is adequate and effective within the community that it serves. Towards that end, the governance that's in place is obviously through the Police Service Board, which then speaks to council. So that provision to determine what is adequate and effective is, in essence, the role of the Board and the role of council.
So can I ask, the question clearly to me is, we and our staff and our joint preal have done, and our finance people have done a remarkable job determining affordability in this community. What, if any, research was done or interaction was done with city staff to determine the affordability issue in this community?
As I stated, not to repeat, that determination is done through Board. They determine a 3.71% increase. The Board then presents that to council, and the options are to accept, decline, or send it back with a different amount. So that authority rests with both the Board and council, in my opinion. In terms of studying staff or having studies that exist out there to determine a benchmark for what is affordable, adequate, and effective, to my original point, within the studies themselves, there is no standing benchmark. What the Act provides for is that the city itself, through those governance models, determines what that is. I think if we were to impart that or come up with a number that we felt, we'd be overstepping our authority to do that.
And I appreciate that answer. The 3.62, my understanding of the 3.62, there's a point, and this is a question directed to Ted. My understanding is the answer, or sorry, the 0.18 is the pulling from reserves. Is that correct? That's included in that 3.62?
That's correct.
0.18?
Yes.
Is there a 0.53 that is, that is doing with benefits as well? That's included in that 3.62?
Included in the 3.62, we have, with respect to employee benefits, we've got Omer's at 0.87. We have government benefits, employer benefits, and retiree benefits. Government benefits at 0.25, employer benefits at 0.20, and retiree benefits 0.25.
Appreciate that. So, and I don't see, Counsel Morley asked a question publicly at the Board, what the maintenance budget was without the 20 officers. I think the response we received then was 3.33. Is that correct?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. From the position, the Board-approved position at 3.71%, you take out the 20 officers, you're at 3.33%.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Powers?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up on that. So you take out the 20 officers, you get down to 3.33%. And then if council was to, if we were concerned, as we noted in our...
Resolution?
In the resolution about the use of reserves, the 3.33% then goes to what figure? Through you to Ted.
Ted?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, it goes to 3.52%.
Okay. So that's the number that we have in front of us with the motion that was put the other day. And I just want to confirm, there's been a tug-of-war of definitions and words over the last, I guess, well, several weeks now, as it relates to what a maintenance budget is. And I think my definition would be one that it's the total cost of the service from the prior year that would include salary and wage benefits that would, that are pressures for the in-year budget that you're looking at. And so when we've heard from police, through you, Mr. Chairman, we've heard that, in fact, a maintenance budget includes, would include the hiring of the new officers. And so maybe I can first ask to Mr. Zagarik, what our definition of a maintenance budget is? Through you?
Michael? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Our maintenance budgets represent commitments as it relates to inflationary pressures to support existing service levels through existing complement. Any enhancements with respect to increased service levels or increases in complement are brought forward through program enhancements.
Okay. So then I, and maybe this could be answered by other Mr. Zagarik or Ted, then, if we're looking at 3.52 with the definition that Mr. Zagarik had just referenced, I would assume, then, that the 3.52 then becomes in the cities, using the cities' definition of no new complement and no new services, essentially 3.52 then becomes the maintenance budget.
Your question is directed to Ted?
I do one.
Ted?
That's correct. The officers are out of the 3.522 budget.
Okay. And one final issue that we had last week, and it was surrounding the use of capital. And there was some questions at the last minute as to whether capital was in or out. And I'm certain that Mr. Zagarik had clarified the same day through your assistance, Ted, that in fact, the 3.52 is inclusive of the capital costs that the city will be providing to the police as it relates to the budget of $140,414,620. To be clear, we did confirm with both parties that in fact, it does include capital financing?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Powers?
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I thank Counsel Duvall for asking the question, but I just want to repeat the question and just get clarity on it. We have two pieces of correspondence before them. One is a letter directed to us on April 2nd from the chief, and the other one is a piece of correspondence from Mr. Gregorio, the Chair of the Police Services Board, dated March 27th. So the clarity I require is, is both the Police Services Board has made a commitment to approving 20 additional police constables and one civilian. And in the chief's correspondence, he's confirming that's the desire. So I guess the end result is there will be a hiring of 21 individuals to supplement the operations of the Hamilton Police.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is the position of the Board. The Board has approved 3.71, and that did include the 20 officers and one civilian hire. And that's what the Board has approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jackson?
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. First of all, Acting Chief Linders and Chairperson De Gregorio, to the service and to the Board members, thank you very, very much for being here today and taking time out of your busy lives. I really appreciate it. So, Deputy, let me just ask, and if some of these questions are repeat questions in our own different words, Deputy Linders, please understand, in light of the machinations over the last month or so, and trying to, everybody be on the same page, one way or the other, trying to nail down numbers so that we can make our own informed decision, and whether we all end up in a... and whether we all end up in agreement or not between the Board and council, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we're just trying to know that we're all dealing from the same script of data information. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Acting Chief Leenders. So Ken, if the 21 new bodies are hypothetically approved, what's the annualized cost next year for the 21? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, please?
Take that, Ted.
Or Ted, Ted Mason, please?
Through Deputy Mayor, the cost of the, of the officers, it's going to be one and a half, a little over one and a half million dollars. And what that represents, and we've talked about it quite a few times, for 2013, the impact of the officers is $511,000, which represents 0.38% of the total increase. So of the 3.71 that was approved by the Board, 0.38 represents that, the officers. So there, the impact on 2014 is going to be 0.75. So a little over an additional million dollars will have to be annualized in the 2014 budget. So there will be a 0.75% impact.
So Ted, thank you for that elaborate answer, but to my very direct question, you said about a one and a half million dollar, give or take, impact on '14, annualized. Correct?
That's correct. But the first part of it, we're going to have half a million in the 2013 budget, and then up to one and a half in the 2014 budget.
Thank you, Ted. But it's one and a half million for '14, annualized, correct?
That's right.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you. Secondly, through you to whoever can possibly answer this, whether Deputy Leenders, or Ted, or any of the other staff, if the estimate, and I haven't been on the Police Board years ago, I respect the fact that come contract negotiation time, you try to estimate negotiations and possible increases of wages benefits based on a rolling number over the years, based on pattern bargaining, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that occurs across the province. So I respect that. In light of, in light of the association president's letter and comments, let me ask you a hypothetical, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Acting Chief Leenders, or whoever wants to answer this. If the estimated increase that you folks have built into this budget is not needed for negotiation, so you've built in, if I recall when I was there, we always built in an upset limit, hoping that that upset limit would ultimately be sufficient. If that upset limit is not ultimately needed, what would you do with that surplus amount? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through this, whoever can answer that, please?
Probably Deputy Leenders would be better.
And through you, Deputy Mayor, the, traditionally what happens, as you know, when you sat on the Police Services Board, Counselor Jackson, is that you get an annual report at the end on, on the plus or minus. And I think you've heard from your previous meeting that this year, we are running a deficit. But traditionally, if there is extra money at the end of the year because we were successfully negotiating a contract, that's reported back to the Board, and then the Board will decide, do they put it in reserves or how they look after that?
Thank you, Deputy. I appreciate that. And lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, based on Counselor Whitehead's question, which he got the answer on maintenance budget with no new bodies, was 3.33 from Ted. Counselor Collins got 3.52 maintenance budget with no new bodies, exactly the same services based on Mr. Zagarik's definition for City Council from city departments. So can I just, again, make sure, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the 3.33 and the 3.52 are both exactly the same maintenance budget, the difference being that 0.18 being the reserve component? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, please, for confirmation on that?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So just to catch up, then, what's the final figure we're now talking about, 3.52%?
The budget before council from the Board is 3.71.
And that has not changed?
That has not changed. That is the approved budget, and that's what the Board has proposed through to council.
Okay. And can someone, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is there a total for overtime in the budget somewhere? Do you have that number? I've gone through line by line, I can't find a final figure.
There is an annual, annualized overtime indications. Usually it's about 2.5 million, corrected?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, the total for overtime and court time is 3.3 million. The, the 2.5 million would be for overtime, and then the remainder for court time.
So you track overtime and you track court time, correct, Deputy Mayor?
That's correct.
And the overtime figure itself was 2.5 million?
Yes, that's correct.
And a lot has been said in the papers about the services, I guess defendants, if you will, the people who are off duty, suspended with pay. What's that total figure projected for this year coming? Let's talk about what it was in 2012.
Without crunching the numbers, it would probably be around $400,000.
For how many officers?
For the officers that are currently suspended.
How many is that, Ken?
Right now, we have four officers currently under suspension.
And so when they're suspended, to be clear, someone else has to pick up their duties?
That is correct. They're suspended, and as you know, we have no control under that. It's governed under the Police Services Act, they must be suspended by pay, but someone else will have to pick up their duties. That is correct.
So the Act requires them to be suspended with pay? Does it give you the latitude to put them on a desk for the four months so they're actually working? Or washing cars in the morning, or whatever?
Actually, I'm going to let legal counsel respond to that.
Through you, or the right to suspend is set out in Section 89 of the Police Services Act. There is currently no option for a police chief in this province to suspend without pay. So all suspensions are with pay. There is, in, depending on the nature of the misconduct that is alleged, there is the option of having the person work on a desk, and that does happen from time to time, vis-a-vis a reassignment to administrative duties. But that's based on an operational decision made by the chief and his command team with respect to the nature and the severity of the misconduct.
Use your microphone, please.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Deputy Mayor. So I'm to assume that the four that are currently suspended, that the incidents were so heinous that they can't work a desk, answer phones, fill up paperwork, lick envelopes, wash cars, further pay?
That is correct. We, there's quite a bit of work and analysis that is done on each individual case, and is determined that, that they should be suspended with pay outside the organization.
And just for clarity, none of the four officers who are currently suspended are doing administrative duties?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And just through you to, to Mike Zagarik, I've been getting a number of questions surrounding the police budget. I guess the, the positive aspect to this exercise that we're pursuing is the revelation of how little accountability or control this council has related to the police budget. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Mike, what is the, the global police budget to date? What is the bottom-line amount that we tax Hamilton residents?
Ted? Or Mike, go?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In terms of the global budget as approved by the Board on February 19th, it would, the 3.71% translates into a value of $140,676,370.
Okay. So would it be fair to say it's the single largest budgetary expenditure of this council? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. When we look at our cost of services, you may recall that we send out tax inserts. Last year, the average assessed home would have paid approximately $2,900. Of that, approximately 18% of that cost was police services-related costs.
Okay. So overall, is there another department that we allocate money to that surpasses that $140.5 million on an annual basis?
So Mike, any other department, like Public Works? I know it's the largest department we have.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the one service that is, has a higher value than police services is, it's actually two services, sorry. There's no one service. On the tax bill, taxpayers would have seen a service referred to as public health and community services at $514. But again, those represent two departments and a number of services. So there is no, sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there is no one service that we report a cost higher than police services.
Okay. So in, in essence, just for the record, we have the single largest financial impact on council, yet we have really no accountability as, with respect to that single-line budget item. Through you, Mr. Mayor, when you incorporate the downloading component of $120 million, which we have no control over, is that number in and around still $120 million? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
To Mike?
To Mike, yes.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it would still be approximately $120 million with the offset of the uploading benefit net of inflationary pressures.
Right. So combined, just for, for the record, combined, $260 million of taxpayers' money that we collect and the average person perceives us to be in control of, we have absolutely no control over. And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what is our entire budget with respect to the taxation budget?
Okay, so the levy budget, not the capital and not the, the rate? What's the levy budget, Mike?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, our net levy for 2013 is just over $700 million.
Just over $700 million?
Correct.
So nearly, nearly half of our, of our operating budget, we have absolutely no control over. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if we were to divest ourselves from, from the police budget, and if the province were to upload that download, how much would that represent an actual decrease in taxes?
Understand the question, Mike?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I could have the question repeated again?
When you combine that $260 million, so if we could decrease taxes by $260 million, what would that represent per household?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the $260 million would translate into approximately one-third of our net levy. So if you took one-third of the $2,900 an average household paid in 2012, it would be somewhere in the area, assuming of about a reduction of $730?
$730 per household?
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Marso, it would be, just over $900 per household.
So nearly $1,000 per household, or basically 30% of our taxes. So just for the record, so public, the public understands, because it seems like we get the brunt of all, all criticism, when in reality, we recognize that it's not deserving. But I'm glad that this has come to fruition, because frankly, I think we need to open up a dialogue about divesting ourselves from the police services. If they're not going to, if we're not going to be accountable, I'm not going door-to-door and representing these people that work so hard for their money to just basically go through this facade on an annual basis. I'm a huge supporter of police, I always have been. The one time that I'm becoming somewhat, providing some scrutiny over it, all we're getting is, is basically defiance. And that defiance isn't to this council, it's to the public, and I find that disgraceful. Thank you very much.
Counselor, just for clarity purposes, the budget was $140 million, we heard? How did you get it to $250?
With the downloading file, the downloading file.
Fire, okay.
The downloading, downloading file?
Downloading file.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I was just trying to understand the arithmetic on that. Okay, no more first-time speakers, second-time speakers, there's Counselor Whitehead and Counselor Clark.
My mind was more on comments than, than questions at this point, so this is the appropriate time to make, provide some comments?
Let me go to Counselor Clark. Counselor Clark, comments? So go ahead.
I just have one, one question.
Okay, go ahead, your question.
I just need to clarify from the public. Sorry.
Thank you. I did receive probably the largest package from the police services than I, than I ever have in the past. The one document that I did receive was actually the line-by-line budget, and I did get it from the police chief's office. But I just want to confirm that I haven't received anything since then that actually had, I shouldn't use this same word, that had the actual expenditures for 2012. So you folks haven't sent me any other documentation other than the original budget that was provided through the police chief's office?
The expenditures, expenditures for 2012 have not yet gone to the Police Services Board. And so all that information still has to be presented to the Police Services Board to, because the Board is the one that governs the service.
That's, thank you, that just prompts another question that's very curious, then. How does the Police Services Board ascertain what the increase is going to be if they were not provided the actual expenditures from 2012, which as I understand it, Mr. Zagarik told us indicated there was a deficit? So clearly, someone has the actual, so you're saying the Police Services Board made their decision without seeing the actual expenditures?
The Police Services Board gets a monthly report on the actual expenditures, but when we close the books, that report has not yet gone to the Police Service Board. And I'll let Ted continue on with this discussion.
In, in 2012, we had a, an unfavorable variance at the end of the year of $286,491. The primary reason for, for the variance was the very high number of retirements that we, that the service experienced in, in 2012. And that resulted in higher than, than the budget sick leave payouts and that. So this, we have a sick leave reserve, and the money, the $286,491 will come from the sick leave reserve to offset the, the variance.
Okay. To be clear, the question I asked, I heard very clearly that the Police Services Board did not receive a budget with the line-by-line expenditures in it for their deliberation this year.
That is not correct. The budget process actually starts in August, and we work line by line with all the departments till we eventually get to what we believe is a budget. The chief and the deputies work through that. And then there is a committee within the Police Services Board that actually go line by line in the proposed budget. And that's, when it, when that committee has completed its work, then it is actually presented to the Police Services Board. So the, the information that the Board has not seen, the budget, is incorrect.
So a committee of the Board, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy, but this is important because I'm, this is
No, actually, I have to correct that. I'm going to ask Eric to respond to that.
Eric?
With the change in the process, and obviously being open and accountable and publishing that, there was no committee that met independently. Those meetings happened in public at the Police Service Board. On November 27th, 2012, the Hamilton Police Service presented their budget to the Board at 5.25%. Since that time, we've had subsequent meetings into 2013. So for the purposes of establishing the original budget, that happened in late 2012. So to have the actuals present was not possible, given the fact that we started those deliberations prior to the end of 2012. those deliberations prior to the end of 2012. We wouldn't have the actual expenditures till year end.
However, the original statement was true in that the Police Services Board came to a budget deliberation without having the actual expenditures before them in that proposed budget.
They haven't--
Because you don't have them yet.
That's part of it, but they did have up to the third quarter by that point in terms of reporting to the board, but not the year-end totals. That's correct.
Thank you. I would like to make comments at the end.
Okay. Counsel Partridge, first-time speaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and welcome, gentlemen. I just have a couple of questions. We've heard, we've heard lots of percentages being thrown around. I just want to confirm one more time what I thought, what I think I've been hearing. The 3.3%, that is without the hiring of the 20 officers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Does that mean that the 3.3 would be with the 20 officers hired, but the amount deferred to 2014?
I don't think so. Just as there was a point--
I'd like to hear it, I'd like to hear it from the police.
I want to feed it back to you because I want to manage this meeting later. The 3.3, then there was a plus 0.18 to reverse the money that was taken out of reserve. That's--
Which brought it up to 3.52.
Correct.
I get that. My question was not about that. My question was about the 20 officers. So does that 3.3 mean no 20 officers, no extra hires, no deferring to 2014?
That is correct.
Thank you. And just my last question is, following up on what Counsel Marula had said about this body ultimately not having accountability or being involved in establishing what the budgets are, is council, does council establish the budget? I'd like to hear that from your folks.
Actually, council's position under Section 39 of the Police Services Act is either to approve the Police Services Board budget, or to deny it, or to set it. And it is the Police Services Board is the one that actually sets the budget and ensures effective and efficient police service in the community.
Thank you. That's exactly what I thought. So I'm a little confused. In the letter that we have from the Chair of the Board, the second-to-last paragraph says, once council has established the budget, and I just, I found that very confusing. So that came from the Chair of the Board. So we do not, as a council, we do not establish the budget.
Through you, Deputy Mayor.
It is to approve or to disapprove?
You can approve or disapprove.
Thank you.
Or you can set a number.
Or set a number.
But we can't establish the budget. Thank you. That answer's my question.
And that would go back to the Board for deliberations.
Mayor Patina, first-time speaker?
Through you, Deputy Chief Lenders, what does the phrase acceptable level of victimization mean?
That would be a term to determine how many victims you think are allowed in a community. And I think you're referring to if you cut a budget, how much could we anticipate additional victimization?
Well, what I would say is that there is, there is a level of victimization currently. There are so many thousand people, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, who are affected by criminal activity in the year, and that's, that's the victimization. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So currently, in one category of policing, we, I understand through our discussions with the Board that we have currently one officer assigned per 100 child abuse cases. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our child abuse branch are, with our current complement of seven investigators, are running over 100 cases each person.
What is the trend of child abuse cases?
We're seeing the trend actually increase in that area as well as many other areas throughout the service.
So by freezing the current complement, we are in fact deeming that as an acceptable level of victimization?
And I think where you're getting that is what our, what our perception is of maintenance versus council's perception of maintenance. The 20 officers that we are, have been approved by the Police Services Board will allow our service to continue providing the same level of service that they received in 2012.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what would be required if we were to, because the Toronto Police Service has frozen the Toronto budget, what would the level of service or officer increase be required for us to freeze at the same level as Toronto?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, if you wanted to compare us to Toronto, Toronto currently runs at 201 officers per 100,000, at a cost of $946 per household. Hamilton Police Service runs at 153 officers at a cost of $657 per household. For us to be like Toronto, you'd have to hire 300 officers and add $3 million to our budget.
Counsel Marula, excuse me, could you just listen to the answer here? Okay. Could you repeat what you just said, Deputy Chief?
The budget, actually, the Hamilton Police Service budget recognizes Hamilton's fiscal concerns and ensures our city is effective and efficient in their police service to ensure the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you could just take the chair from-- And I'm hearing is the chair, that there's two definitions of a maintenance budget. So there's two definitions of a maintenance budget. There's Mike's interpretation and there's the chief's interpretation. And there was a resolution that was placed before committee on March 21, and subsequently referred to today to allow for clear questions to take place. That will come back to a committee, a general committee tomorrow. And I assume you've seen that resolution. And just for clarity purposes, do you understand that the resolution that was placed before committee and we voted on tomorrow is Mike Zagaric's definition of a maintenance budget?
Will you understand that, that your interpretation of maintenance budget is, is the 3.52 or the 3.33? Our definition is the 3.71, which is approved by the police service.
Yeah. And I'm just a little concerned that it will be misunderstood when it comes back to you. That's why on the record, I want it very clearly understood that a maintenance budget from this resolution's perspective is no new 20 officers, one new civilian. Can you just confirm that that's, that you understand that's the intent of this motion?
I do understand the intent of the motion.
Okay. I'll take the chair back and we'll go to comments now. We have questions again? So let me just start another speaker's last time. So Counsel Pearson, you're a first-time speaker, so why don't you go first and I'll go to Counsel Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I just, I appreciate the line of questioning that you just had. So let me just clarify. Then the percentage of 3.33 is saying this is with no officers and one civilian completely out, but that does not preclude that the chief does not still pursue that. Is that correct? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
That is correct.
I want to be sure that's on the record. Thank you.
Okay, and Counsel Collins?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I just want to clarify from a budget perspective how this impacts the city. And so the request, the formal request that we have on record through our own budget process is 3.72. Is that correct through you to Mr. Zagaric? What we've incorporated into the rate updates that council has received to date, the number we're looking at, I think, is the 3.72 figure or 3.71, just to clarify?
Mike, do you understand the question?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I understand the question, to date, our presentations have reflected police services at 3.9% or $140,932,240.
Okay, so it's, it hasn't been reduced yet to reflect the new ask or the revised motion at 3.52?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, at our budget GIC schedule for tomorrow, we'll provide an update with respect to the, the Hamilton Police Services Board approved, 3.71, which would translate into a further reduction of about a quarter million dollars. And we will provide an update with respect to the motion and the reference to a 3.52% increase and what that would translate into in terms of an impact on our draft 2013 budget.
And just using the math that you had just used to get us from the 3.9 to 3.71, it looks like taking us to the 3.52 almost takes us to about a half a million dollars in additional savings at the city. Is that safe to assume?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the 3.52 translates into approximately $140.4 million. And again, we are reflecting or have reflected to date 3.9%, which translates into $140.9 million. So the council's correct. The difference would represent a reduction of approximately half a million dollars.
Okay. And because we have some board members here and some of the staff who will be key to making the budget decisions, I just want to make sure that maybe Mr. Zagaric can recap for us the direction that we've given our own staff in terms of, as you know, Mr. Chairman, this council's been fairly resolute in trying to get to as close to a zero as we can through four consecutive budget processes. This is budget number three. And I think we've been the top, in the top three in all of Ontario for the first two. I believe that taking us to something lower than what we're at now, if we get below 1.9, I think we're second to London, if memory serves me right, from the last presentation that we received.
Mike?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in terms of our comparator group, we are second lowest at approximately 1.9%.
That's great. So I just want to confirm through you that that's our goal and objective, and certainly the same will hold true next year. And any additional expenses that we carry over to 2014 will make that same goal and objective all that much more difficult to achieve. So I just wanted to hear Mr. Zagaric reiterate that, and I'm pleased with the answer, and those are the only questions I have at this point in time.
Thank you. Counsel DeValle, second-time question?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to the deputy, one of the deputy chiefs, as we've heard the numbers float around of what could be a possible budget, if we can agree on this council, I've heard from the chair, even if, without 20 officers, it was 3.33. That's what the chair has said in her letter. The percentage is 3.33 with the 20 officers included. However, in the chief's letter dated yesterday, he has been very, very clear. Even if he didn't get the 3.71 and council established another number and he used 3.62, he was very clear that they intend to approve the hiring of 21 officers. So my question, through you, Mr. Chair, is even if it was set at 3.52, is it still the, is still the intent for the Police Service Board to hire the 21 officers?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, it certainly is the number-one priority for our service is to hire the 20 officers. Whatever this, the council decides to set the budget at, the board would have to review that budget and then decide on the next actions that would take place, including the hiring of the 20 officers.
Okay. I think that answers it. Although we already got clarity in a previous question that if we pass the resolution as recorded in the minutes of March 21, it does not include the 20 new officers or one new civilian in the budget.
That's not what I'm hearing. It doesn't matter. Mr. Chair, what I'm hearing is it doesn't matter what we set this number at, the board will then take a little look at it. Their priority is to hire 21 officers, no matter what the rate is. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, but that won't be our message back to them if we pass this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And I was going to open up to comments now, but I guess Counsel Whitehead, you have a question? Then you can go right into your comment, because you're first up for comments, and Counsel Clark.
Yeah, I just clarification. In many of the presentations to the community and certainly to the board, and I'm going to set the crime index or the violent crime index aside, on youth crime and all those other fronts, the numbers are dropping. Is that correct through the chair?
Crime is going down, but our city's growth continues. We have 34,000 additional officers. There's new provincial hours of 34,000 additional hours of work. Between 2009 and 2012, there was an additional 1,000 arrests done by our service. That includes court costs and everything else. There is additional provincial downloading and federal loading, that downloading that happens all the time. And we're, basically, we're talking about investing in policing, community-based policing, the proactive approach, youth crime trends, crime prevention. So it all depends. Crime is going down, but it's still our job and the, and the job of the Police Service Board to ensure that there is adequate and effective police service in our community.
Appreciate that. Are we expecting any dramatic changes in provincial federal legislation next year that's going to have any impact on the decision that we're making today in regards to resources?
At this time, we don't expect it. However, we have seen trends such as human trafficking, other downloading that have happened where the province says you will respond to that. I think of the example of the sexual offender registry. That was downloaded on the service, and we had to respond to it and without any additional funding from the province or the federal government.
Now, is it, it's my understanding that, what, 700, how many officers do we have? Uniformed?
830 officers sworn.
830 officers? We've heard that crime is going down in many areas. Can I ask this question? Because Bob was so kind to focus on what is the, Mayor Bob was focusing on what is seen as unpalable by many in the community and quite frankly disgusting and need enforcement. So I just want to focus on that so-called spin. Do we not have the resources operationally where we see increase in certain areas of crime to move officers to those areas? Is that a flexibility that we have within the service? From one area that's maybe dropping low to an area that you see an increase? Is that flexibility there?
The flexibility is always there. However, when you pull from one area, another area actually suffers. As you know, and has been told at the Police Service Board, we have hundreds of fraud investigations that have not been looked at. We have extreme workloads in our sexual assault and child abuse branch. We have one person looking after all these sex offenders in our community. So yes, when we have a protest, or we have a major incident, or we have a homicide where we have to put numerous officers on those cases, we have the flexibility of moving the officers. But that does not mean that other areas do not suffer because of that.
And to be clear, the officers that we have per 100,000 is around 154?
153, that's correct.
Per 100,000?
Yes.
So Edmonton, Calgary, Vancouver, I think Winnipeg, Durham, New York, London are either below or equal to that, that number?
That is correct. Our provincial average of policing per 100,000 is 198. We're at 153. And I think you can't not look at the crime severity of our community, which is over 90%.
Okay, which is close to Windsor, is that correct?
I believe so, and I think Windsor have about 240 officers per 100,000.
And they came in at 0% in their budget last year?
That'd be great if you brought us up to that level. Again, if similar to Toronto at 201, that would be 300 officers. So if we were at the same level, you're probably looking at a much greater number.
They came in at 0 again this year?
Windsor's crime severity rate is 76, where Hamilton is actually at somewhere around 93, I believe. And yes, they did come in at 0. Again, they're starting with a much bigger bucket than us.
Thank you. On the comments?
Yeah, I've just been speaking to the clerk about procedure here, and it's been suggested that we should hold back the comments section until tomorrow's budget debate when this will be lifted. Or, you know, the clerk says it's not the right thing to do. We could in fact lift it up today and vote on it today.
Let's do that.
But her preferences, the preference of the clerk's office, and rightly so, is to do it tomorrow as part of a budget meeting. This is a regular GIC meeting. And I don't see any particular problem with deferring it until tomorrow, but I'm at the mercy of committee, what you want to do. Anything to add on that, Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, the Police Service budget is part of the entire boards and agencies' report, which is before the GIC budget meetings. And at the budget meetings, that portion has been deferred. If the Police Service budget is approved here at GIC today, that specific recommendation will not go to council within this meeting's report, but it will be carried over to the budget report where all of the entire city's budget is approved.
So as our clerk, is your preference, we do it tomorrow?
It's my advice.
Your advice to do it tomorrow?
It is my advice.
And I don't see any particular problem with defer. Leaving until tomorrow, it's a regular agenda item. We just don't hear any comments today.
That's fine.
It was the purpose of today was to ask questions. I have nobody wanting to ask any more questions. So at the, okay, get a point of order, Counsel Clark. And I'll come to you, Counsel McCarty.
To be clear, we have done this before in the budget process, lifted a budget item in one meeting and simply moved it over. So we have done that type of thing before. It's not out of the realm of possibility. I was prepared and thought we were doing it today. I'm prepared to make comments today. And I wanted the police to hear the comments. If we do it tomorrow, then the police officers and the Police Services Board, they're not necessarily going to hear anything that we say. And so we've already been operating in a vacuum for months now. I'd rather them actually hear what the councils are saying.
Frankly, I think I'd like to put it to a vote then and get the will of committee. Procedurally, the council, your advice is to take us to tomorrow. So the budget stays together. But I hear some committee members who would like to do it today. So I would enter, okay, you move a motion that we lift this and debate it and vote on it today? Is there a second to that? Counsel Partridge, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor?
There are.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. So I think we need to put the motion first and then we'll open it up to comments. Is Bernie going to make the motion? Who's seconding it?
I'll move it. And seconded by Marula. Where is, why did I get on the table? Whereas the council of the city of Hamilton recognizes the community's ability to pay as a guiding budget principle through 2010 to 2014 term of office. And whereas there is a growing concern with the current economic climate for the fiscal challenges that face our city. And whereas council has established during this term of office, a budget target of as close to a 0% increase as possible with boards, agencies, internal departments, and all emergency service divisions. And whereas council firmly believes that the Hamilton Police Service has consistently proven its ability to address the public safety needs of our residents and businesses. And whereas council believes that the maintenance of a current level of police service has proven to be very successful and responsive to the needs of the Hamilton community. And whereas council does not support the Police Service Board request of 3.71% as it includes 20 new officers representing a 0.38 percentage of the 2013 budget request with an additional 0.75 budget pressure in 2014. And the unsustainable use of reserves representing 0.18% of the 2013 budget request. And whereas a 3.52 increase will provide a sustainable and affordable budget that assumes no reduction in complement and service. Therefore, it be resolved, the city of Hamilton supports a 2013 Hamilton Police Service budget of 140,404.
Forty million.
I'm sorry, 140 million, 414,620 dollars, representing a 3.52% increase over the 2012 approved budget.
Okay.
Chair, that's the motion.
And, okay, so I'll open it up for discussion now. And so far in the speaker's list, I have Counsel Whitehead, Counselor Clark, Counsel McCarty, Counsel Marula, and Counselor Pearson. Those are the speaker's list so far. So Counsel Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I, the first thing I want to say again, and we need to always reiterate, I believe that our frontline officers and management are second to none in this community in providing safety and services. So I want to make sure that that's pointed, because obviously, when you start dealing with budgets, that always gets spun that you're anti-police. And I'm certainly not anti-police. I think we got some of the best in the country. The issue for me, quite frankly, Mr. Chair, is the police budget, and it's not just happening in Hamilton. So I want to make it clear. We're at SCM and we're hearing it right across the country. Ontario, the police services, the police officers are the highest paid in the world. I think we had 33% of the officers on the Sunshine List. That's an issue in itself. The other reality is, is that our police budget back in 2000 was 80,000, 80 million dollars. Today is 140 million, almost double. It's not sustainable. And I can tell you that the ministry is taking notice at the pushback this community has provided. And I want to make this clear, the ministry, the provincial government, has taken notice on the pushback. And this is a milestone, because you don't often see community jumping on board. Police has always been motherhood because of the great services and reliable services they provide our community. But what's transpired in the last year and through the polls and the phone calls and emails, and I want to highlight, and that's why I asked the question in the report, willing to pay, that's an important element. And each one of us, we're elected in our own prospective wards, representing those interests, not the appointed board members. We are. We hear from our constituencies every day on almost every issue. And certainly taxes is one of those issues that come back every day from our constituents. Control the increases, control the increases. We know that we have one of the highest senior populations in the community or in Ontario per capita. We also know that we have an affordability issue. One of the highest issues in Hamilton is the affordability issue. So we cannot be compared to Mississauga and Peel and Durham and York when you talk about people's ability to pay. So when you take all these things into consideration, if you look at your police services budget since 2008, it increased by 20.3%. When this council was elected, and one of the happiest moments, we were all on the same page. Let's push for a sustainable zero. Let's get close to that zero as possible. And we provided direction to our general managers to try and do their best to get that number down. And every year, our general managers, for the most part, had delivered. Some cases even below. And the question often asked in asked in the community is, if your general managers are put under this, in this target to meet those targets, get those numbers down, why are police services treated differently? Because over that same timeframe, you need to understand that the police services have never, ever, ever met those targets. But there's something happening in this community. And I think that's part of the education. And people start recognizing that it's time to push back and understand that it is not an open pit when you go to the taxpayer. And when you talk about a report that says willing to pay, I would hope, I would hope that the board members and the appointed board, and this is targeted to the appointed board members, I would hope they would listen. Because they need to understand that we get the calls. We're the ones held accountable every four years. And we're certainly hearing from the community, it's time to control the police ask. So when I take a look at the reports with crime going down and understanding that operational decisions, there's still flexibility within their own service report, which identifies they can do that. What I understand that they took 20 officers or 24 officers from other locations and put it into one particular team, and their own report, it identifies that they have the flexibility to move those officers around to needed areas. And it's pretty clear to me that there's some capacity within the police services. And I'm saddened by the fact that it seems that there's a line being drawn in the sand. And this is the, I've never seen this before. We've never had a situation where, and I think Counsel Jackson put it best a number of meetings ago, when he said, look, would you consider five officers, just looking to see if we can get some movement? There has been absolutely zero, zero movement. And let's understand this, the original budget was 5.25%. Now, they whittled it down to 3.71. But the reason for that is because, one of the reasons is because the officers they wanted to hire, they couldn't hire sooner because the school, the school wasn't available. So they couldn't hire them till the latter part of the year. So by supporting the 3.71 ask, you in fact were in essence supporting the 5.25, because the balance of that would have been deferred to the next, next budget. So it was a bit of a shell game. To support 3.71, you're supporting 5.25. There's no kidding around here. So when I look at the 3.62, and I'm hearing clearly that even with the 3.62, they're determined to hire 21 officers that we know is going to come back and bite us next year on the budget, that concerns me. But the problem is, is the council, we can't make operational decisions. We can only make budget decisions. We could set targets, we could send it back. That's all the options we have. So when Counsel Collins puts forward the 3.3 as the maintenance budget, we don't want them pulling from the reserves. So that's 0.18, that comes to 3.52. So to me, that is the maintenance budget. I believe there's capacity within the police services. And I have every confident that this chief can deliver. He has no choice. That's the position we put him in. He has, he has the where-for-all. He has the capacity. And I hope, and I know that this board, because we have some very good representatives on the board, will listen to the comments we make around this table today and hopefully understand the affordability issue in this community and take that under consideration when this motion is passed. I'm hoping that's the case. So I will be absolutely supporting what's before us. And I just hope that the chief and the board recognizes the challenges and listens carefully to this debate. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I would like to start off and to thank the chief's office and the Police Services Board for the provision of data. I didn't get everything that I asked for, but I got probably 98% of what I asked for, which is in itself a historic feat in the city of Hamilton for the police services, because the budget was always this clandestine process that we didn't know anything about. They went behind closed doors, and that's where they made that decision. They came out and gave you the number. This time it was different. You know, I actually had a budget, so that I quite clearly saw the budgets that were presented for each division and for ident and everything. It was all there, except for the actual numbers that were expended. And that's the one challenge that I had. So I do want to, I do want to thank for, you're coming, you've come a long way from where it was. We have to finish the job, though. And I can't underscore enough for me what it means to me to have the expenditure figures included in a budget. We go over these community groups that come in and it's the expenditure numbers that tell us exactly what's going on. We can understand very clearly the life of any organization. When I was taught how to assess, you know, financial statements, that was a part of the process. You needed to see the expenditures, and you clearly understood right then and there. And it pointed to patterns, it pointed to issues that may be for you. But when you're dealing with a budget, it gave you the very clear picture of where they were going. So what I'm left with right now is a budget with no expenditures marked in it. And I'm being provided a number of percent, percentages of increase for the budget. But I really don't know what the 3.5, 3.6, 3.712, 1.18 is going to reflect in the overall budget. If I were to take 3.5% and add it to every single line item on the budget, that would be a significant overall increase to the budget, really significant. So I can't tell by the documents that are before me whether or not the calculations that are being utilized are truly a maintenance budget or not. I wish I could, but I honestly can't. And that is the quagmire that I now find myself in. I've talked to a lot of my residents, especially over the Easter weekend about it. And without a doubt, every single one of them was struck by the fact that I didn't have the actual expenditures listed in the budget. How can, how can you do your job without knowing those numbers? How do they, and I understand, we simply approve the budget, reject the budget, or give them a figure back. But it would be helpful if we had the actual expenditures, so we knew what figure to give back. I can't do it. So I'm still caught in that quandary and without those numbers. And I heard the reason that was provided to me, that the reason they wouldn't provide those figures is that it was in a collective bargaining process, and they didn't want to, in essence, tip off the association in terms of what money is around. My initial reaction to that was, yes, that's a valid position to take. But then it also dawned on me, we do it frequently. We will pass our budget, as does the province, as does the feds, line by line, in the middle of collective bargaining. Because we're a transparent democratic government. So what's the difference here? Why couldn't I see those numbers that I could verify the calculations? So that's my frustration. And for that sole reason, I will not be supporting the motion that is before us today. Hopefully, next year, I'll actually get to see everything. Thank you.
Counsel McCarty?
Thanks very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I will be supporting the motion before us. And I'd like to reflect on my rationale for doing so. To begin with, I'll just again thank the police for being here today and at the previous meetings, and just generally for the great work they do across our city. They certainly do great work in Ward One, I know downtown and elsewhere. So that's the overriding comment. But I just, just I'm reflecting on the letter that was sent, I guess, yesterday to us from the Police Services Board, or from the Chief of Police. It, I guess it makes sense from a police perspective, the perspective contained in this letter and probably the Police Services Board. They're quite rightly focused on their particular service, which is one of many services that we deal with as a city council right across the city, looking at all the different departments at the city of Hamilton, and of course, all the boards and agencies and other things that we deal with in our larger budget discussions. And I was just struck by some of the language used in here and how we could in fact use the same language as we think about other challenges we have here in the city and funding required for those. The letter speaks to the five pillars of public safety that the Police Service has built into their system. And, you know, we could easily talk about the five pillars of, of community good functioning that we work on here at the city. I would say the number one for me would be housing, both maintaining the housing that's out there. We've talked about the maintenance requirements for affordable housing and building new housing and reflecting on the housing waitlist that we have, some 5, 6,000 people who, you know, in the language that we're dealing with today in the police world, we perhaps call them victims. Victims of how society functions and victims of not, for whatever reason, not having enough income or being in the right family situation or any number of other things that could occur, mental health challenges, they find themselves as victims and don't have proper housing. They're on the affordable housing waitlist that we have. So that would be pillar one that we work with. The second pillar might be food security, where we work with, in our case, with the food banks. And we contribute funding for food security. We have a food security committee at the city who try to proactively come up with alternatives on that. The third, I'll go through these quickly, Mr. Chair, because I don't want to go into detail on every one of these. And I've just listed these this morning as I was listening. Third one might be early years programs. We know the importance of the zero to six years of age period for children. And we're about making Hamilton the best place to raise a child. So we have programs that are important in that area. The fourth might be income supports and supplements, where we work with the OWODSP program. We've got various other supplements that assist people, the low-income bus pass, which we'll touch on later. And the last, for lack of time, I've simply listed as Parks and Recreation programming, where that's also very important to people here in Hamilton. And, you know, keeping the kids off the street and all kinds of other things that Parks and Rec programming does. So I think I only outline those, those five as five pillars. So I think I only outline those five as five pillars that we might say we work with. To say that we, beyond the Police Services Board and the Hamilton Police, we need to deal with a whole variety of other challenges that also, I would suggest, affect crime rates and how our neighborhoods function, how people function here in Hamilton. And it talks also in the letter about, you know, using benchmarking and tools, and, you know, we've got the social determinants of health that we work with, and we have benchmarking we work with on these programs that I've talked about. And we're, in some cases, not up to snuff on those programs in terms of benchmarking. We ideally need to put more money into those programs to do well. And I think if every city department used the approach that's being used here by the police, they talk about the ratio of officers to population, so the ratio of housing units to population in our case, population growth, crime severity index measurements, so the index of poverty impacts that we see through our work, we would come to the same conclusion as they've come to, that we need more money. Every department in the city needs 3%, 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% increases. But we don't, we don't have, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we don't have the luxury of doing that. We also have the mandate to keep our taxes at a supportable level. That's been touched on by other speakers. And we need to serve all those masters, all those different interests, the police budget and crime issues in Hamilton being one of those, but we have many other interests as well. So in reflecting on those, it's important that we keep to a sustainable budget in the police to go along with the other challenges that we have. So that's why I'm supporting the motion before us.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And let me start off by saying that I proudly stand by the Hamilton Police Services Association and the thousand members who have clearly supported the motion that's before us now. In no way is this an anti-police. If anything, it's really about protecting the front line and what they believe, and I'd like to empower them. And as a result, we're supporting something that they've asked us to support and have, and they've publicly endorsed. And in saying that I'm proudly standing by those thousand officers, nearly thousand officers, I say that I do that with a great deal of respect and pride. And as I've said in the past, I've never not supported a request from the Hamilton Police Services in 13 years, and I didn't anticipate doing that this year until we got into a tug of war for no other reason but for a tug of war. And I think that is what is really the saddening component. The other component that I'm really pleased about is that this has become a catalyst to the fact that the governance process in Ontario, as it pertains to not only downloading file, but policing, is broken. We're not accountable as a council. And clearly, the vast majority of the public, when we tax them on average $3,000, if we were to tell them that 1,200 of that $3,000 has nothing to do with any decision that we make here at council, but basically, that of powers greater than us, and that being the province, because we are a creature of the province, and this legislation that provides governance for police with provincial appointees, really is no different in the impact, because they're both downloading and both really abusive in nature as a direct result of our relationship and the legislation that allows for this to foster. So I'm glad that this is occurring for one thing, for public awareness about the fact that nearly half of our operating budget is out of our control, which begs the question or raises the question, how can we fix it? So I'm using this example as a means of changing this particular problem in the future. And I thank councillor Clark, because he mentioned something that he's not supporting this motion, because he doesn't have enough information. Well, frankly, that's why we need to change it, because if we were accountable, if this body actually had some sort of teeth to making a decision, then frankly, we wouldn't be in this position, as councillor Clark stated. So let's use this as not only as a means or a catalyst to create awareness about how broken the governance process is, but let's move on making those necessary changes. And I will be bringing forward a motion. I need to speak with staff and people at Queen's Park in order to formulate in a manner that's conducive to move this forward, to change this broken governance system that's unaccountable, unelected, and frankly, unacceptable. And I again emphasize how I stand by the thousand members of the police association who really are the bread and butter of the Hamilton Police Services and who I stand proudly by. And I frankly am disappointed, as I said in the past, but I am proud of the two elected officials that understand the need, councillor Morelli and councillor Whitehead, who understand that accountability in elected office is important, that understand standing up when you see something wrong to try to change it is important, and to understand that we are here to serve the public and not to participate in a tug of war for the sport of a tug of war. And that's the saddening component to all of this. Let's remember why we're all here. We're all here for the taxpayer. The system is broken. We need to fix it, but we need elected officials who stand up on behalf of the residents and not become a rubber stamp. And that I truly need to be noted. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and certainly to colleagues around the table who've spoken. I know, I think we all, and I want to concur, that certainly stand by not only the chief, our deputies here today, police association, the police association members and the board. I think they work very hard. It's not an easy job. And I know when the calls go out for 911, we want to be sure that the response service is there. I am also pleased to read, just reading over the chief's letter, that the Hamilton Police Service is absolutely committed to the delivery of excellence in policing at the budget approved by the board and/or established by council. So I'm pleased to see that he stands by what he's directed to do as far as serving this city, and I'm sure and confident he will come in with what is being requested. I also wanted to just add on the table, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that reading the letters, we knew going into this budget also that, yes, this is a maintenance budget, and just for the public's information, most of the items, even in our own, all the other departments, these are budget items that are out of the control of our staff and our, to come back and say, we can reduce this. These are omers, these are benefits, pensions, et cetera, that we have no control over. And we know all of our departments have been coming in with the same messages that these are costs that they cannot eliminate, and we have to pay them. So that's 2.78% of the chief's budget is just that. So I just wanted to be sure that that's on the table, that we understand that. I stand by the motion that's before us today. I think by reading the chief's comments in his letter, that we can move forward. I'm confident we will continue to have the services in this city. And I do know that, obviously, I asked the question, even at 3.33, does the chief intend on hiring 20-plus one civilian? And that may come about. So we'll have to see what happens. I guess my question to that, if I could ask a question after all of this, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is what does happen? Because I've never been in a situation where the chief may go to the Ontario Commission, Police Commission for deliberation. What does happen if it comes back and there's a change? Can I ask that through you two? I know Mike's not here, but maybe one of the deputies.
Mike should probably be the right guy to answer that.
Maybe one of the deputies can answer. Like, what happens to the budget at that point?
Ken.
If the matter is sent to old cops on behalf of the board, the old cops will make a decision, and they'll determine what either the budget is or the issue today is about officers. They may come back and say the officers are needed, or they may say more officers are needed. At that time, they'll come back and the budget will be set by the province of Ontario.
And once it's set, then I assume it would have to come back to us, and I'm sorry, Mike's not here, we can ask that question later, that it would have to come back to us for deliberation, is that correct? Or is, well, dollars would have to be expensed.
I take it goes to old cops, and that decision's final.
That decision's final.
Correct, but we'd have to find the money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that decision hasn't, has not been made by the Police Services Board, Captain.
Understood, just putting it out there that that's the process, and I appreciate that. But I do stand by this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And, you know, anyone, anyone associated with the public service at any level of government quickly realizes, when you're a part of it, that your salaries and wages drive your budgets. That is primarily the largest chunk of any public sectors, any public organizations. Global budget, the largest driver and cost is your wage component. And so it came as no surprise to, I think, most of us when we witnessed the downturn in the economy in 2008 into 2009, when it hit hardest, that in fact, we were forced, like other organizations, not just in the province but across Canada, to switch gears pretty quick and try to find ways and means in which to stem the tide of the budget increases that we've seen in past years. And we were fairly successful so far in doing that. And I recapped earlier the successes that we've had over the first two budget sessions. And, you know, it's ironic today that if you look at 8.2 on the agenda, which is an information report, it gives us a good summary of the wage increases that we've seen associated with our own organization, what the comparators are across the province, but it also provides a snapshot of where we've been with some of our unions and some of our boards and agencies. And if you turn to the, when we deal with 8.2, Mr. Chairman, you'll note that from the years 2009 to 2012, the wage increases for our management here at the city, again, I want to remind everyone, the largest driver of our budgets are employee-related costs. The wage increases for our own management staff through those very difficult years were 3.4%. For our unionized employees, I believe it's just under 5. And for the police, in that same time period, they're 12%. And so I think there were a number of speakers earlier who talked about the rising cost of police services, and what can council do as one stakeholder, it seems like we're a stakeholder in that process, what can we do to try and ensure that we're responding to the problems, the economic problems that we've experienced over the last number of years? And I can say with confidence and great certainty that the vast majority of people around this table have bought into getting as close to zero through the budget process as possible, at least through the first three budgets, the vast majority, not unanimous. And I can say with great certainty that the vast majority of our bureaucracy has bought into the fact that we need to get as close to zero as possible through all budgets. And the vast majority of our boards and agencies have bought into the fact that we have some economic challenges ahead of us, and they've bought into the fact that we need to get to as close to zero as possible. And it's not a race to the bottom. It's not about cutting services and slashing and burning, as we've seen other governments do in the past. It's about trying to find ways and means in which to provide the same services, or better in some cases, with less resources than we may have had and less COLA increases than we might have experienced in the past. And so I want to commend everyone who's been a part of that. It's been, it's been a success. We know that despite our record building numbers that we've seen, and again, we just heard yesterday at planning that we're experiencing record growth again in 2013, we're 2.5% ahead of where we were last year at this point in time as it relates to building permits. But that's all for naught if Hamilton can't in some shape or form address its uncompetitive tax rate. And so we can let that happen, and we can, you know, we can win awards based on that, and that's all well and good. We've worked hard for that. But if you allow your tax rate to continue to be uncompetitive, and certainly we've heard that in certain sectors, then it's all for naught. And so this is part of that big puzzle. It's part of a big plan, and I'm glad that the Police Service Board representatives are here today to hear some of the challenges that we face. Newspapers, and they're probably listening to some of the same radio stations that we are, and they're on the web. And so it's important to understand that this is part of a big plan, a bigger plan that we have, and there's sort of a method to the madness, if you want to call it that. And I don't think it helps anyone to see some of the saber rattling that we've seen over the last several weeks or several months. It certainly does very little for morale. And I just hope that when we pass this budget, the board will find a way to help us with the challenges that we have and find a way to make the service and deliver the service as they have in the past. As the motion mentions from councillor Morelli, we've had terrific policing service in this community for the last, well, for decades. And we've been a part of that. We've supported the service. But I think that the organization just needs to be aware of the economic challenges that face us at this point in time in the city's history, and somehow, we need to find a way to work together rather than rattling those sabers, which, for whatever reason, has been the case over the last several months. So those are my comments. I hope most will see fit to pass what we have today, and I look forward to a positive response from the Hamilton Police Service Board and their staff.
Next is Mayor Portino.
So thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We, I think everyone agrees around the table, we have had outstanding performance by the Hamilton Police Service, and especially since the appointment of chief to care. So the heat of the current debate is really, the heat comes on the level of compensation, but the police budget is about the level of service. And that's why I referred to in my question earlier on, the level of victimization. And we know by the numbers that we need to do more to provide the adequate and efficient level of policing. The United Nations did the analysis, and median around the world of police officers per 100,000 is 300. The United Nations recommends a minimum police strength of 222 per 100,000, or one officer for about every 450 people. That's from the UN. Currently, Hamilton is about one for every 651. Hamilton, as we've heard, 153 officers per 100,000. Canada, 202 is the average across the country. In the United States, it's 256. In Germany, it's 298. In Hong Kong, 393. The Netherlands, 328. Italy has 417, and Spain has 511 officers per 100,000. That's the average. I've got the floor, councillor. So once again, I would be happy to move the motion that we freeze the police budget, as Toronto did, at the Toronto rate of service delivery, including officers per 100,000. And you've heard the number. It'll cost us. Question arises about, or the statement is made, Mr. Deputy Mayor, about the biggest portion of our budget is the police. Well, guess what the number one response is? In our surveys, the previous mayor did a survey, Michael Marini did a survey, and the number one issue for residents is policing and safety. So that's where the public says policing should be positioned, based on their, the surveys that we've done with our public. In 2011, council decided to increase tax rates for the new areas of the city. Council also decided to keep tax levels in the old city the same. This is the area rating reinvestment plan. So had savings from area rating been built into tax rates, the old city would have had a 0.3 increase, but council, and I voted for it, because I thought it was a good thing, I supported it. Let's keep the tax level in the old city the same, which meant a $20 increase per taxpayer in the old city. I supported that. The arguments were made. I believed in those arguments, and we have to consider, for instance, the enhancement that has been asked for in the current budget by the wards. The enhancement is 500, over $500,000, and on the ward budget, that is, makes a total increase of 16%. I supported that. We reheard from our colleagues that they required a higher level of service to see that the public was properly served, because I believe and I trust in my colleagues. I'm not sure why we don't believe and trust in the chief of police of Hamilton, his senior officers, and my colleagues on the Police Service Board. We heard that the police budget since 2008 has gone up 20%. 2008, the ward budgets went up 3.9%. Last year, the ward budgets went up 10%. And as I said, we have, if you work the enhancement out, and I'll, you can ask Mike Ziegler, because I asked Mike, is this because I asked Mike, is this what this means in terms of percentage? So we, if we're so desperate for dollars, we could have made other adjustments, we could have made other adjustments to. We heard about terrible comments about our Police Services Board. This was a statement that was made, that you people traditionally in the public sector, you could always go back to the good old tax trough and ask for more money, because appointed members of the board. Well, guess where we who we are? We're public sector. We're at the tax trough. We're taking more money from the public's pocket. We had a very outstanding appointee to the Police Services Board that you appointed, and his name was Jim Kay. And Jim Kay supported myself and the other members who supported the chief's budget. At the end of that very heated meeting, one of our fellow councillors leaned across to Jim Kay, and the reason I'm telling you this is this was published. I would not do hearsay or talk out of class. This is what was published. That's the last time you'll sit here. And at the next meeting, Jim Kay resigned. And Jim Kay asked that he not say anything public about his resignation, but he would like to speak to individual councillors. I don't know who's called Jim to talk to him. But this is the emotional level that this very important process, the police establishing the police budget, has gone to. And so my colleagues, I'm sure that the chief to care's budget is going to be turned down. The arguments are all about the compensation levels, not about the service levels. And the chief, in his professional opinion, feels that what he has put forward is what he feels in his professional opinion is what is required to provide adequate and efficient policing. And you and we as a council, if we turn that down, are saying policing is, the victimization in Hamilton is adequate. The one per hundred abuse cases, and the abuse cases are rising, and all of the other stuff that you heard, that's fine. With this council, because of the attitude that this is an argument not about the service level that's being provided by our police service, but the compensation, that's another argument, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we're making, and our AMO representatives and our FCM representatives will know, that that coordinated bargaining will be taking place, or at least has been proposed, to address the very high levels of police compensation. But that's not what this is about today. What this is about today is the adequate and efficient provision of security and safety to our citizens, and I support the chief's budget. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Farr.
I support what's before us here in the form of this motion, and I think today's debate and recent correspondence, Mr. Deputy Mayor, from Hamilton Police Services and from the Hamilton Police Services Board, gives me confidence to do so. I have confidence in the Hamilton Police Services and their ability to make this number work. And I have confidence that the board, with their incoming new representative, representative soon to be selected, I guess, from our City of Hamilton Selection Committee, will work together in making this number work and work with the chief in making this work. And Mr. Deputy Mayor, in my experience working with Chief Glenn DeCare, his crime managers and everybody in between, it's been a good one. I think Chief DeCare particularly, I speak obviously for downtown Hamilton and Ward Two, has proven himself both capable and creative. And you can look at the action, and you could look at his support and the police services support for programs, innovative programs like the Social Navigator program. And in terms of his management, and of course, we've recognized through and through that it's it's impossible for us to get a look at line by line by line with respect to the Hamilton Police Services budget. But I think that the chief of police, his management and the board are also proven capable when dealing with shifting and shifts. And he has obviously changed shifts in recent past, and perhaps that's an avenue that'll be discussed. I can't predict it, but that's something that can be taken into account and debated in respect with working with the three point five two. I believe in the chief, I believe in his staff, and I believe in the board, and I think they're going to find a way to make it work, and they're going to focus on those areas, and we've heard of one obviously repeatedly today, that need more attention and perhaps draw resources away from areas that that they are able to do just that, draw resources away, and support those areas that obviously need attention. Board knows more about those things than I do. I'm not on the Hamilton Police Services Board, and so does the chief and his management. And I want to thank them all for attending here today and for answering and addressing this issue, this outstanding issue, as it relates to our two thousand and thirteen budgetary process. And again, very supportive of the motion before us.
Okay, I'll just run through the speakers list that's left. These are first time speakers, Powers, Partridge, and DeValle, and Johnson. And second time speakers, which I hope will keep us short, because I think we know where this is going, is Collins, Marula, Clark, Piccatti, and Whitehead. So we've got a long way to go yet. So councillor Powers.
Thank you. I'll be I'll be very brief. In response to councillor Marula's comments about, Sam, I'm talking to you. In response to the the issue of policing and the appropriate provision of policing is an issue in all municipalities in the province of Ontario, and in fact, all across Canada. Recently, there was a summit held in Ottawa with regards to the future of policing, the increasing costs and the and the challenges for all municipalities, all provinces, territories, and the federal government was an issue that was raised. Here in Ontario, EMO has been invited to participate in a workforce that's called the the Future of Policing Advisory Committee. It's been established by Minister Mayor and and is is ongoing. And and very clearly, the the cost and the the provision of services and the cost associated is one that's there. I mean, we're lucky enough, and I'll say this very candidly, we're lucky enough to have a municipal police force. Because those municipalities who have their policing provided by OPP, their costs are going up eight point five five percent very shortly. And and they determine what the 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 resourcing is is going to be and just sort this out. So one of the with the issues that the superintendent, the new superintendent has delegated to one of his, sorry, the commissioner has delegated, I keep losing track of titles, has has delegated to Superintendent Shilton of the OPP, is is a billing and a costing component. So they're looking at that from a from an OPP. So councillor Marula, I'd be pleased to provide you with the information that may assist you in the development of your of your motion. The second thing is obviously, and we're supportive of the position taken by municipalities in being in support of the interest arbitration component, is we have no problems at all with where, in the case of policing or or fire services, it goes to arbitration, and that's in the small case. The vast majority is there's an agreement reached by the bargaining units and the and and the the management and respectively the council unacceptable, but in a small amount, around ten percent, and they find their areas to interest arbitration. And the issue that's raised in councillor Morelli's motion is with regards to the the issue of affordability and the ability to respond to the condition, the fiscal health in municipalities, is something that we're asking for review. So I think that reflects upon here. Directly to the motion is, my first reaction is to vote against the motion, not because I'm opposed to it, it's just because I'm opposed to the police going ahead and hiring of twenty additional people and one citizen on the basis of the decision. You know, we've instructed our staff in order to to freeze in where we can, and we've we've had success in rolling back on staffing of of the city. Setting it off for a year until things are better economically for all of us would make all kinds of sense. I just can't understand the the focus, I'm going to call it the, no, I'm not going to call it. I was going to say what it was, their their desire in order to increase the complement no matter what the circumstances. So I think I'm going to probably support councillor Morelli's motion. Whereas my desire is not to support any increase at all in the police budget, let the chips fall where they are, but anyway.
Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and very eloquently said councillor Powers, and I really couldn't add much to that. I will not be supporting this motion that's that's before me. And I mean, it comes down to affordability, and it comes down to, at some point in time, we have to push back. Not only can our municipality not support it, but our province can't support it. I I just, every day I open the newspaper and I see, you know, a billion dollars at this, a billion dollars at that, eight hundred billion. The the numbers are staggering that our province has to deal with. And that means our our municipality has incredible challenges ahead of us as well. I have never had so many phone calls and emails from my taxpayers ranting on about this police budget. I I I have been taken aback by it on how many, starting before Christmas, saying you absolutely should not stand by and approve this. I don't know what a maintenance budget is, because I don't know what the expenses have been. I don't know what the costs are. I don't know what the actuals are in the budget. And I understand, that's why we have a Police Services Board. But the message loud and clear has to be, we can't afford it. And somebody, some body, some political force has to start hearing that message and do something about it. We need action. We don't need to continually hear everybody bellyache about it. We need to do something about it. So I appreciate all members of the police force that are here today and the board for coming in and presenting. I have a great deal of respect for the officers, the boots on the ground out there. We rely on them heavily for a lot of things. But the rural areas are not being serviced. They are just not being serviced the way that the taxpayers expect them to be. Rightly or wrongly, that gap is there. So I will not be supporting this today. I would not be supporting anything except a zero percent budget. Thank you.
Councillor DeValle.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate what everybody's been saying. And I too, my members or my residents, have come and told me loud and clear when it was set at five point two five percent, that this was just not the right way to go. And I've been pushed to ask for zero. I I've done some research and talked to some police officers and talked to the chief, where can we make the cuts? I want to thank councillor Morelli and councillor Whitehead for the work they've been doing on the board. And my understanding is that a maintenance budget could be acceptable. We want to make sure that we still have the safety in our city, and I think what's put forward to us today would be the appropriate thing to ask the board to reconsider because of the affordability issue that some of our residents are talking about. I also understand that the chief has sent us a letter saying how critical and the highest priority of the additional officers that our mayor has even made comments on to make sure that we have adequate safety out there, where areas might be short of officers, where the crime, that type of crime has increased. However, I also received a letter from the president of the Hamilton Police Association, we all did, and basically recognizing the challenges that we have as a council of trying to keep the affordable cost into our taxpayers. And he states in here that he recognizes the two legitimate needs that the chief is saying and what the the council was saying, that the need to ensure a high level of public safety and security, and the need to restrain expenditures during the period of financial difficulty as part of the corporate team of the City of Hamilton. What this president went on to say is that they're willing to sit with the chief of police and their senior staff, as they went out and they spent some money on doing and hired a consultant, that they went out and asked each police officer of where they see some problems that they could be fixed by cutting down some waste, where we all know every department has that, and they will ask them to go back and look at where they can cut that waste. Now here we have the president of a police association putting his hand out to the senior staff and to the police chief, based on the frontline officers' experience, where they see that they're top-heavy in one area, and they can just deploy some officers in another area and still meet our adequate safety service that we're having, that our police are giving us. So I have to take that in action and then look back at what the Police Board Services is requesting, and saying, okay, we believe the twenty new officers that you're requesting, or I'm looking at it saying, I understand what you're saying, that there's a need there, but the need might, you might have that need already. It's right in front of you, you just got to talk to your frontline officers, the ones that have the experience, that are gold in the street and they do that action. So that would bring it back down, and knowing that they have some collective agreements that they have to honor, and being that the the payments issue, you're looking at pensions, these are costs that we all have in each department, and we all want zero percent. But as we know, as we're going forward, some departments just can't come into that. So we might see an increase in our taxes, we might not. But we've got to remember too, that sometimes we keep asking for cuts, and then the cuts have to stop, because then we direct the services. So I think what's before us, then by councillor Morelli and councillor Whitehead, is fair. It it it's an affordable budget, it's not taking any compliments out of the system, it's giving us the same service that we our police give us, and and I think it's fair. And and I'm hoping that the senior staff of our police department takes this message back, and I know we have a couple of councillors and the mayor, and take it back to the board. Tell them, explain to them the discussions we had. I think it's very important, when I see this message from the police, the president of the Police Association, that they want to work with them. They see that they want to have a made in Hamilton solution. They're not asking for a province-wide solution, they're asking a made in Hamilton solution. They see our our challenges, and they want to help. And I think that's pretty good. And I and I believe that when I go back to my residents and saying the three point five two percent was basically the lowest we could get without cutting your services in the police department. So I will be supporting it. I'm reluctant, I wish it was down to zero, but however, that's what we're facing, and we have to make a decision, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, and the last first time speakers, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had two community meetings that the police came out to and explained to everyone what the what the problems were in our areas and what we were working on. And they came out, did an amazing job, explained to the residents how they deploy their officers, because the residents were saying, why don't we just have somebody specifically for a village or specifically for an area? And rightfully so, the answer was, we do not, we do not deploy officers geographically, we deploy them where the problems are, we deploy them where they're needed. And quite frankly, in your two areas, they're not needed, they're out there full time. So it's very difficult, when I'm hearing through the police presentations, that we need, because Bimberk's growing, we need more police officers. And when I specifically asked, will those police officers be deployed to Bimberk Village, knowing the answer, the answer was obviously no. We don't do it geographically. Having said that, I just wanted to put this out here, that I've said this, and it was written in the paper, and I stand behind it a hundred and eighty percent, this is not a personal issue, this is not my critique of the police and how they're handling their job on on the street. They are doing amazing for for Ward Eleven residents, as as I'm hearing across the city. But what I'm hearing from our residents are enough But what I'm hearing from our residents are enough is enough. The average salary is $48,000 per person in the City of Hamilton. So now we're asking for more money from them to pay for what we're asking not to pay for. We're asking every GM to come in with a zero increase, and we're holding their feet to the fire over that increase, 0%. So, and unfortunately, the sunshine list didn't help coming out at this time of the year either, you can take that where it's coming from. But I've been consistently asking for budget cuts, and Deputy Mayor, you and I have been doing it together as moving those motions forward, it's finding it a little surprising this time, everybody's coming up and going, whoa. So it's kind of nice now, we're all on the same wavelength. I can't support what's in front of us right now for that very reason. We're asking for 0%, we don't see the budget, we can't comment on it, we can't say yes, that's justified, that's not. So I, to this point, don't even know if 3.52 is the answer we need to have. So I can't support this at this time, the 3.52, for the same reasons I'm hearing from everyone else as well. We don't have the numbers in front of us, and when we have the numbers in front of us, clear-cut numbers, line-by-line budgets, then we can go through it and say to my residents, this is why we're asking for the increase, period. So we have those answers. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Jackson, also first-time speaker. I apologize, I thought you were a second time, so the floor is yours.
Not at all, thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I won't, I'll try not to repeat a lot that's been said, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I think councillors De Val and Collins, Whitehead, Morelli, McCady, and Marula have nicely summed up the sentiment where I'm at. And so I won't repeat a lot of that's been said, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The chief came in in his first budget asking for a 5%, and I believe there were several extra bodies, new bodies that he asked for, and I believe it was in the human resource development area, and we supported it. And last year, came in with basically, if I recall, was a maintenance budget, which I believe got unanimous support from council. And so here we are in this current situation. Mr. Mayor, I guess, Mr. Mayor, the Police Association, as has been stated, has said that they have, they want an opportunity to work with the chief and the deputies in a different manner that could save the taxpayers some money and could provide some deployment that they feel would garner greater benefit. That's according to the president on behalf of the association. Just stating it for the very last time, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just love our police service, I think they're second to none. And again, having served and have been since on council, whether on the police board or just as a member of council, having served with the Colin Millers and the Bob Madaws and the Ken Robertson's and Brian Mullins and now Chief De Care, we've been very fortunate. But the four previous chiefs that I've been on council with and are part of the boards with in the past, we've always found a way, between the police board and council, to have a very productive, constructive, positive work and relationship, given the fact that council is the funder on behalf of the taxpayers of our community. And so I'll just close, Mr. Deputy Mayor, with saying, it's obvious, I've watched this, I've watched this story unfold over the last few months, and Chief De Care, who's entitled to his opinion, there's obviously an air of defiance that within his heart of hearts he has stated. Mayor Bettina, who is absolutely entitled to his opinion as well, and one of our elected reps on the board, has stated his defiance on behalf of the chief's defiance, for all the reasons that he's stated. Mr. Mayor, unfortunately for me, I've observed that this is a new era in the relationship of defiance between a majority of the board, not even a unanimous decision of the board, and currently just a bare majority of the board, four of seven members with one municipal vacancy versus council. And it's not a pleasant, savory, favorable era of this relationship of defiance that I'm pleased about. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll conclude with, basically, I'm respectfully, very, very respectfully asking, I'm pleading, I'm literally borderline begging, that an open-mindedness will prevail at the board table before 2013 budget is finished. I will support the motion here before us from councillor Morelli and Whitehead. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to put myself on as a first-time speaker too, before I go to second time, and very briefly, I'm going to show some leadership here by being very short. I don't want the public to think that we're simply turning down 20 new officers. I just double-checked it, and since 2001, we in fact have added 85 new officers. So there's been an ongoing complement increase since 2001, and it was '21 or '22 when the province came out with the new program in '06 that were added. And so we've gradually been increasing the complement. And secondly, you know, I've been fussing for, I think since I've been elected, that it was always uncomfortable, police coming in two to three times our guideline, and then what other boards and agencies and even our own departments are coming in at. So I'm prepared to support the motion today for those two reasons. So I'll take a chair back, we'll go to second-time speakers, and the first is councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and again, to be very brief, following in your leadership, I need to add, there was an outstanding issue, as you recall, at the last meeting, there was a question as to whether or not the capital costs were included or excluded from the current number, and I think we should revise the therefore clause, which is the last clause in the motion, and it should read after the $140 million reference, inclusive of capital financing costs.
Moving that as amendment?
I am moving that now.
Second by councillor Morelli.
Councillor Morelli.
Okay, so to the amendment then, any comments or questions? So he's simply adding, making it clear, the actual resolution that this, 14414620 is inclusive of capital. Okay, discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Carried.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you. And just one other matter, there was a statement made earlier that area rating actually increased the former City of Hamilton's tax levy. In fact, there was no change to our tax levy. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, the motion that we supported was one in which there was a phased-in approach in the suburbs. The increased dollars that would be gathered from that phased approach would be reinvested into capital reserves, so there's a 0% change on the City of Hamilton's, the former City of Hamilton's tax levy.
Hearing the area rating discussion.
From the area rating discussion, correct.
Okay, and we'll move on now to councillor Marula, this is second time.
The first item I was going to speak about was to correct the inaccuracy of the previous speaker surrounding area rating, but that's been dealt with. Secondly, I need to emphasize that, as councillor De Val has as well, and as I did earlier, that the Hamilton Police Services Association, that represents 1,000 members, supports the motion before us. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Councillor McCady. Why are we doing this? This is nice and short. Councillor Whitehead. Wow, okay, so you have a motion that's been amended, that's before you? Does anybody need to have it reread, or has everybody got in front of them and understand it? Nobody needs it reread, it's been requested for a standing recorded vote. All in favor of the motion as amended? I'll call them out then. Councillor Pearson? Councillor Powers? Councillor Powers? Councillor McCady? Councillor Farr? Morelli? Hollins? Jackson? De Val? Whitehead? And Ferguson? Those opposed, please stand. Mayor councillor Clark? Councillor Johnson? Councillor Partridge? And Mayor Bettina? Believe me, I'm sure that carries. Okay, so I'm going to suggest now that we take a break until, we still got a lot of agenda items to get through, until 22:01, that's a half an hour then. 20 to 2. Thank you.